Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the October 1st during the City Council meeting. I want to thank all of you joining us in the audience tonight and thank you for those of you joining us live on DGov. We're going to start with a little show and tell. I'm hoping the cameras can turn to our new Civility First pledge banner. I want to thank the Community Relations Commission for their efforts in promoting the Civility First program throughout our community. We have, so far, we have 60 businesses who have signed up for the Civility First pledge and 83 individuals. As a council, we have adopted the pledge. We operate under this pledge as a council, promoting civility and respect, and we encourage all individuals to please take the pledge. And we really want to thank the Community Relations Commission for brightening up our boardroom and making it just a little bit more colorful in here. Anyone want to add anything? Okay, alright. So, thank you again for that. If anyone wants to join us in public participation, please sign up on the sign-up sheet below. And with that, Ms. Phillips, can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Baxter.
Present.
Counselor Bateen.
Here.
Counselor Noseworthy.
Present.
Mayor Potem Broke.
Mayor Yusef.
Here.
I am, do we have any actual or perceived conflicts of interest this evening, councilors? Okay. I'm going to request a motion from council, please, for an amendment to our agenda order tonight. I'd like to move public participation, item number eight on our agenda, to agenda item number four, which would be our next item. I'm requesting this change because we have several presentations tonight, one including the proposed budget for 2020, which might take a significant amount of time. Therefore, this amendment, I want to allow the public to speak at their convenience. You will be welcome to speak now and at Agenda number eight, if you'd like, as well. So, whatever is most suitable for your schedules. May I have a motion? Is there a motion from council for that?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Bateen.
Yes.
Counselor Baxter.
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy.
Yes.
Mayor Yusef.
Yes.
Alright, we're going to then move into public participation. Thank you, Amber. If you've not signed up, feel free to sign up now. When I call you forward, if you join us at the dais, speak your name clearly for the record and address. We are limiting comments to three minutes, two and a half minutes. Our interim city manager, Amber Blake, will wave her hand to let you know that your time is almost up. We don't mean to be distracting, we're just trying to run efficient meetings, but we appreciate what you have to say. So, thank you for joining us. And with that, can I have Andy Cora, please?
Hi, council. Andy Cora, 312 Fiesta Circle, Durango, Colorado. I'm here this evening to speak on the 32nd Street, Animus River Trail Bridge. So, this connection is our final link in the main stem of the Animus River Trail. While each section has intrinsic value, I would say that the connected whole's value is ex-potential. This creates a nearly 11-mile uninterrupted traffic-separating trail. You'll be able to ride from the north city limits to the traditional south city limits without a pause. And it really brings all of our neighborhoods together now, from north to south. Kind of brings everybody into the conversation. I think it makes it easier to then justify and get support for future connections and future extensions of our trail. So, let's look at some outcome scenarios of the decisions you guys will be making. You know, one, we can build this bridge now. It's a sure thing, it's in the budget, and it's the least expensive time to build. Two, we can delay and build it later. Well, we know that'll be more expensive. And we have to ask ourselves, are we delaying to see if other priorities take precedent? Because none of those are sure things yet. None are ready to go. All could experience substantial delay, even though they are needed, just as is the 32nd Street connection needed. It's really hopes and prayers versus a plan of action. Three, don't build it and abandon the traffic-separated trail. So, this really abandons residents in existing neighborhoods to the north who've been paying taxes and watching this process through 18 years that it's been playing out. It really cuts them off from a connected trail. It changes courses on a process that many have been watching and saw over the decades. It was a process the public supported through many generations of city council. And I don't recall anybody running on a platform to kill division of the Animus River Trail. I don't believe a mandate exists in our community to do that. Let's talk briefly about GOCO. I think this does not set a good precedent if we were to back out of the GOCO funding with our heretofore excellent track record with GOCO. You know, you may have asked, and the State House may have told you, that other cities have abandoned or delayed projects. Well, I don't think that's the right question to ask. I think the right question to ask is, did it negatively impact those cities' future bids? Did it raise or lower the esteem of the city in the eyes of the grant court? I can't imagine it moved those cities up in the pecking order for future money, and I don't believe it would ours. GOCO funds are a discount on our project. Never will $500,000 be worth more than it is today. Just as the cost to build goes up with delay, so does the value of that GOCO discount go down. So, I think we need to capitalize on a finished product delivered. Let's let school out early. Invite businesses and community members for the ribbon-cutting celebration. Fill the Animus City Park and Memorial Park on each side of the new connection with Fun and Games. Have raft companies give rides from Oxbow down to 29th. Now, get the word out to Denver, Albuquerque, Phoenix press. Invite GOCO. I mean, let's capitalize on the centerpiece of our parks, trails, and bike-centric community. Let's make that connection at 32nd Street. So, I'd like to submit this, I will submit this electronically. Also has a link to TripAdvisor, which shows the popularity of our Animus River Trail. I would also like to submit this letter. This is a letter in support of the trail. And just so you know, I'm not a lone voice out here. This is signed by 92 residents and business owners in town who endorse this letter as well. I'll also send both of those electronically to council as well.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Cora. Janet Wiley, please.
Good evening, council. Nice to see you. I'm Janet Wiley, 312 Fiesta Circle, Durango, Colorado. And I am here also to support the bridge and the funding for the Parks and Rec. I have participated in the vision of this northern extension and this bike path and the Oxbow Park and the put-ins for the last 18 years. There were 17 public hearings, and I remember going to one and asking my mother to take my son to dinner for his birthday, because it was his birthday that day, and I chose to go to a public hearing, or a public meeting. It was a, there were a lot of people that went to all those public hearings. The vision of the Parks and Rec was to see a trail, and I don't think that this is the end of it. I think that the future commitment is further north and further south. But, the goal was this up to Oxbow and have it a contiguous trail that bikes and pedestrians could tie into from Oxbow all the way to Home Depot. It's a fabulous extension. It's underway now from 32nd northward, but even that extension, the north end, had to be realigned because of people, neighborhoods, open public comment. The city and the Parks and Rec really made an effort to get the trail alignment to work with the majority voices. And so, they worked hard for that. I feel that it's selfish for people now to say, "Let's not connect it because, let's leave that north end by itself and just have a crossing, a street crossing," because that's the only section that isn't connected. And so, I think it'd be selfish of the neighbors to say, "Don't connect that." I think that, I had a friend tell me that they bring, you know, flashing lights, bells ringing when the train crosses through, but we don't do anything for our kids. And this is a highly populated crossing for kids going to school. We've got Mountain Middle up here, we've got River View, we've got everybody coming in from the north end. And not to connect that to the bike path, I think, is disingenuous and doing a disfavor to our children. I think that's what I have to say. I hope you'll consider that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Freeburn.
Hello, council members. My name is Mike Freeburn. I reside at 16 Delwood Place, Durango, Colorado. Between 1990 and 2001, my address was 3302 East 3rd Avenue. And that is right there at the raft put-in. If you drive in there now and you go put-in to go paddle on the river, my house is, my old house, I wish I still had that house, it was a great house, but it was right there overlooking the river. I bought that house so that I could easily access the river and paddle, which I did for 11 years there, year-round paddling in the winter when it wasn't frozen and so forth. In 1998, I happened upon that intersection where there's now a flashing crosswalk, 1998, moments after an eight-year-old neighbor girl of ours had been hit by a car in that intersection. And I was shattered to see this girl unconscious, laying on the street, as other neighbors were gathering around and emergency services were responding, and the adolescent male driver who struck her was in disbelief. I watched as the paramedics loaded the girl on the gurney and watched her leg flop because she had a broken femur. It was incredibly disheartening to see. This was after I had crossed that intersection numerous times with my wife, going for walks along the river and down the park, and cursed at so many drivers going by, you know, fearing we'd be run over. Our daughter was born in 1999, and we would go for walks often in strollers to that intersection and cross, there's a painted crosswalk there, so many times, I had a rock in my hand because I was ready to throw that car. I never did, but it was unbelievable. That hasn't changed. That intersection is dangerous, and it's only a matter of time before the next little girl gets run over in that intersection. And the solution was discussed here, in this room, for the last 18 years. How do we fix this? And there's a solution, right in front of you now. You have the solution to this problem. Not only will it solve the problem of our neighborhood kids being run over on that street, but it will also fulfill the vision of what the Animus River Trail is, from Oxbow all the way down. And then, as it's appropriate and as we can afford it, build the other pieces. They will come. I just really want to say to you tonight, please finish what has started. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lisa Blumquist.
I'd actually like to speak in my 5.7.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. Anyone else that could join us for public participation before we close and move on? Okay. With that, we're going to move on to our presentations tonight, and the first one, oh no, we'll do the first, no, the first one, no, we added one, is the City Manager's Proposed 2020 Budget. We added it, we got an email on it today.
It's not on.
It is.
It's not on my meetings.
It's on the... That's right, I don't know why you added it. Maybe you downloaded it, I have no idea.
I did it after I got here.
She probably downloaded it before we edited it.
Yeah.
Oh, you just added it today. Okay.
I just downloaded it this evening.
I'll check, I'll refresh.
Okay, sorry, Amber.
No worries.
We are anxious to hear about the proposed budget.
So, good evening, City Council and Durango community. Tonight is the presentation of the City Manager's Proposed Budget for FY 2020.
And before you start, I'm just going to suggest to council and to let the community know that we're going to let Amber get through her presentation, we're not going to interrupt, we're going to let her go ahead and speak and present to council. We will have time at the end for brief comments, but we do have two full days of budget retreats on October 7th and 8th. So, really, this is just an opportunity to present to council and the community.
So, I'd like to start out with the fact that this, the 2020 budget proposal is online under Hot Topics on the city's website, so the electronic version is live for all the community members who would like to go to the website and see what's in the budget and proposed in detail. And we will also be having the budget retreat that will be streamed live and it will be reported for future reference for the community. So, on September 3rd, City Council adopted five new goals. And the new goals are, goal number one, to address Durango's affordable and attainable housing, including options for the homeless population. Goal two, expand Durango's unique identity as a driver of enhanced quality of life and sense of place. Goal three, improve environmental resiliency and encourage responsible stewardship of natural resources. Goal four, require and support effective utilization of resources to supply city services. And then, goal five is to advance fiscal sustainability and resiliency. The detailed council goals can be viewed on the city's website at durangogov.org/councilgoals. This year's goals, our community will find are much more detailed in terms of the objectives that council is hoping to move forward. So, the city of Durango provides a complex number of services to our community. And on this graphic, this is a little bit outdated, but I think it gives a good idea. This is from 2017. The items circled in yellow are funded through enterprise funds, and the items circled in red come from the general fund. This is important to note when we're looking at the budget, because enterprise funds have revenues within that fund that are generated that pay for the services that are provided within that fund. Whereas, the general fund is supported through fines and fees, as well as predominantly sales and use tax. So, this proposed budget reflects council's new goals. It is a goal-driven budget. So, you will see when you look at the document that each of the council goals are identified with the icon in front of the goal for 2020 within each department and division. This overall budget includes the implementation of the compensation study. It looks at initiating an urban renewal formation, opening the library on Sunday with extended weekday hours. There are projects with the FY 2019 dedicated tax to be used for street projects and operations. There are no new taxes proposed. And the assumption has been made, although the decision has not yet moved forward at council's level, but the assumption was made that there would be the implementation of the water and sewer rate study recommendations. And there are also the capital improvement projects called out within the budget. So, that's the high-level overview of what's included. When we look at all of our operating fund expenditures, you can ask yourself, where does the money, where does it go? Where's the money spent? So, within the budget, 55% is in the general fund. 12% is in the sewer fund, 7% is in the water fund, and 13% is within the internal service Fund balance is also something that I know is very important to the community, staff, and council. So, we wanted to review what we have in fund balance. So, our fund balance is required to have 3% of taper in the reserve, which is approximately $1.5 million. Council has a policy to have between 15 and 20% set aside in a rainy day fund. So, if there are emergencies or something happens, the city has enough operating reserve in that rainy day fund that we can fund between two and three months of operating expenses. After the rainy day fund and the taper reserve, we have what I have heard that this council refer to as an opportunity fund. So, we have that remaining fund balance that could be used to take advantage of future opportunities that will help move the community and council's goals forward. At the end of 2018, we had an additional 1% in the fund balance. And by the end of 2019, we're looking at 15% in the rainy day fund and then finishing off the year with 17% in that rainy day fund. So, moving towards that 20% policy that the council currently has as a goal. When we move into 2020, you can see that we will be increasing or adding to the fund balance at the end of 19, rolling into 2020. So, that is this number up here. So, that will be rolling into the fund balance from the end of 19 into 2020. So, this is our projected fund balance beginning of 2020. We're looking at the end of 2020 to have a projected fund balance of $9.1 million. By the, we are focusing on, in this budget, looking at fiscal sustainability. So, with the operations and projects that are proposed in this budget, our goal is to have a 25% fund balance by 2025. And what's proposed in this budget is attainable, to have that 25% fund balance by 2025. So, that's our five-year look ahead for fund balance. When we look at our general fund revenues, 66% of the revenue in the general fund comes from taxes and assessments, whereas 10% is from charges for services. And then, 16% is miscellaneous, and I should explain a little bit about what's in miscellaneous, because it does make up 16% of those revenues. So, in miscellaneous, we have our leases for the cell phone towers and buildings. We have inter-fund transfers. The largest portion of that is the administrative fee that the enterprise funds pay, and that's $2.5 million of that 16% there. The recreational program fees, as well as rec center fees, are also included in that 16%. And then, we can go and move into the 6% of inter-governmental revenues. We probably will have community members that ask us what that is. And that's really the HUTF, so the Highway User Trust Fund, allocation, federal and state grants, and then the 911 user fees. So, we have user agencies for our 911 communication center, and the fees for these are agencies are included in that portion of our revenues. When we look at the projections for sales and use tax revenue in the general fund, we are looking at this graph here. So, you can see that over the past few years, we do have a conservative estimate on budget, on projected revenue increases. And with this here, the striped line that's a little bit darker on 2019, is what we are projecting to bring in for the remaining part of the year in sales tax, and then the little yellow hash mark at the top, if you can see that. Here is what we're expecting bringing in for projected revenues for the remaining part of the year. And then, in 2020, you can see that that's all projected. When we move forward towards capital improvement expenditures in the general fund, we do have a new revenue source in 2020. So, in 2019, we have the 2019 dedicated sales tax that was passed that came into effect in July. So, July 1, our sales tax rate increased by half a cent. And we are including that in these projects so that there's an understanding of apples to apples. Once we move forward about five years out, we'll be able to separate those projects that are paid for from the 2019 dedicated tax out of the general fund CIP expenditures, because then we'll have similar trends that we can look at. If you look at 2015 and 16 and 17, we had a decent amount of funding that was going towards street projects, as well as other capital infrastructure and capital improvement projects, like network security, network storage, stormwater master plans. That's what's included in these items. In 2019, as you know, we had zero capital improvement projects in the general fund. And as we look to 2020, we have $2 million in projects that could be off a little bit, if you look at this. We have $2 million, a little over $2 million in projects for streets, that includes Thomas Avenue, as well as street reconstructions, crack ceiling overlays, and bringing up ADA ramps to the ADA standard. And then, we have $400,000, so it's $2,250,000 in that street's portion. And then, we have $400,000 in capital improvement projects in the general fund, and those include Stormwater Master Plan Phase 3, GIS Planometric Feature Updates, Public Art Match, Grandview Access Control Plan, which is a project that we are combining with CDOT and La Plata County for an access control plan out on the highway in Grandview area. And that is what is in there. So, when we look at the general fund in terms of highlights and the slides moving forward, just to let you know, will be the same slide for each of the funds so that we have consistency. So, in terms of the revenues, total revenue increase in the general fund revenues is 8.3%. That's $3.4 million approximately. We have a 3% sales tax growth over 2019 adopted budget and 1.8% over the 2019 forecast. When we're looking at charges for services, there were increases to the fees and program fees at the rec center, so that is also included in this 4.2% increase in charges for services. And then, we're transferring from the 2019 tax for operations, which is that crack ceiling overlays, street maintenance for there. In the general fund expenditures, there's an increase of 10.2% in the expenditures, the implementation of the compensation study, and then the library open on Sundays and including those extended weekday hours. There are eight new positions proposed in the budget in the general fund. This includes five positions for the library to allow it to be open on Sundays in those extended hours. It includes a new head lifeguard at the rec center. This is a key item for safety of the users in the aquatics facility. That is also covered with that cost recovery as well, so it's not a direct 100% impact to the general fund. We have a communications manager that is proposed, and this meets council goal 5E, the increased communication item. And then, we also have an administrative analyst in the finance department. In terms of the water enterprise fund, for revenues, you see a total increase of 4.1%. We are making the assumption that the residential and commercial rate increase will be based off of the rate study at 2%. And then, there's the out-of-city differential that will be applied at 1.15%. Operating expenses are decreasing by 47.5%, down to $5.6 million. This is a huge decrease, because in 2019, there were expenditures in this budget that were put forth for the administration building that we are not putting in this year's budget. The staffing has the compensation study implementation, and then there's $1.2 million of new capital improvement projects in this fund. The sewer fund highlights, the total revenue increase is 2%. The residential and commercial rate increase, we're looking at a 3% increase as the assumption, and then reducing that out-of-city differential from 2 to 1.15. The proposed operating expenses are a decrease of 16.7%. Again, implementation of the compensation study, and there are $2.65 million in capital improvement projects budgeted in the proposal for 2020. Moving on to the airport enterprise fund, the total revenues in this fund are increasing by 17.8%. This is due to increased fees and charges per the schedule that was recently adopted by the Airport Commission and approved by the FAA. The parking revenues from onsite parking has increased throughout the year, and the projected increase here is 8.5%. Operating expenses for the airport fund are an increase of 17.7% with that implementation of the compensation study. And then, the capital projects for the airport, we have a couple of different items here. There's a transfer to the capital projects fund for about $170,000 to address several small projects on airport property that is available in the fund balance. Again, as an enterprise fund, it has to operate within itself. And then, an additional $2.5 million in capital projects that are funded through the FAA grants, passenger facility charges, and CFCs. When we move to the Sustainable Services Enterprise Fund, which is trash recycling and sustainability programs, the total revenues are increasing at 6%. There's a 3% rate increase proposed for residential and commercial solid waste and recycling fees, with no change to the sustainability fee. Operating expenses in this fund are decreasing by 1.1%. The compensation study is implemented, and there's a $50,000 transfer to capital projects fund for sustainability projects. For the Transportation Services Enterprise Fund, which is parking, transit, and multimodal, we are looking at a revenue decrease of 8.1%. we are looking at a revenue decrease of 8.1%. This is in part, this is due to the decreasing federal grant revenues. We are on the step-down program for the reallocation of grant funding that CDOT's policy chain shifted, so we're in the third year of that program. Parking revenues are remaining stable, and parking continues to support transit. The operating expenses in this fund are decreasing 3.5%, and the fund continues to struggle to be fiscally sustainable, and we are continuing to seek additional funding and find ways to increase efficiencies so that we can be sustainable. The compensation study is also implemented in this fund, and there's a $150,000 transfer to capital projects here for parking meter upgrades. So when we're looking at the next steps, we will be moving into our all-day city council budget workshop on Monday and Tuesday of next week, October 7th and 8th, where we will have the opportunity to dig into the fine details, answer questions, and move forward with this budget process. On October 15th, there's a joint city council board of county commissioners study session related to the joint sales tax, and that's where council will see the presentations for the library and the airport, and then discuss the rest of the joint sales tax. You'll also be able to watch the county's presentation on the senior center's budget. And then finally, there's a study session on October 22nd. This city council study session will be where we look at community support funding. The Business Improvement District will be here. Tim Walsworth will present BID's budget for 2020. There, we will have a brief discussion on the contracted services reports that you'll be receiving in the next couple of weeks from our contracted service providers on that day. Then we'll have a public hearing on the budget here in this room on the council meeting on the 5th, followed up with November 12, city council study session, budget reconciliation. And for all of the public out there wondering what that might be, that is where we go line item by line item, and any changes that are made from the city manager's proposed budget to the final budget that'll be moving towards adoption will be clearly and transparently delineated in that meeting one at a time. And then we are looking for budget adoption on December 5. And that is my presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much. Comments? Quick questions from council?
Okay. All right. Some points of clarification, Amber. Going back to any anticipated cuts in transit routes as part of the transit, is that in the budget at all, or are we staying? Is your proposed budget staying at the status quo right now?
That is a great question, Councilor Mateen. We are staying with the current routes. I will say that we are also looking at, with that joint sales tax piece, the request from the county and direction from council, looking at what we could possibly do to provide transit service out to the location at Purple Clips. What that would look like, that would be an increase to what's in the proposed budget. But as it stands now, 30-minute headways, seven days a week on the existing routes.
Great, thank you. Additionally, just a point of clarification on the airport fees and charges. My understanding is those are charges that airlines are bearing, not those charges aren't going to the individual travelers. Is that correct?
The airport will apply them. So when you have a passenger facility charge, if you look at your airline ticket, you'll have both PFCs and CFCs. Those are built by the airport. It's an agreement between the airport and the airline and basically the provider, and those monies are given back to the airport where they are collected. So it's collected by the airport and then remit to, by the airlines and remit to the airport.
I just didn't want anybody watching thinking that we were increasing their departure fees or anything.
We are not, and we still remain at the lower end of those fees.
Great, thank you. And then the administrative analyst position in the finance department, is that their place, a position that we lost this year, or is that a new position?
No, that is a new position. The finance department is one of the few, very few, that do not have an administrative assistant. And so when looking at the needs of the departments to be able to do the work that needs to get done, the request has been made for an administrative analyst that places that position in the right area with the right skill set, that will be able to help make the workflow within the finance department.
Okay. And then just briefly, you're forecasting 3% sales tax growth. I know we've forecasted pretty much flat growth over the last couple of years. What would you say, just in general, the justification for the increased forecast is?
We are looking at trends, and I may have Julie come up and do a little bit more explanation if she would like to, but we're looking at an increase of 1.8% over the forecast for 2019. We have seen a good increase in 2019 when we're looking at what we had projected after our revenues came in for 2018. Again, we did have the 416 fire, so that made an impact. But we are looking at a solid growth, and Julie, if you'll...
So I'll touch on it a little bit. So when we go from budget to budget, it looks like a larger number, but if you go from what we're actually bringing in right now, what we're forecasting for 2019, it's only at that 1.8% over, so it's still pretty conservative. Our budgets the last couple of years have been low because the economy is kind of, we had a new president in 2000, whatever year that was, the economy was in flux, then we had the 416 fire, so we were really conservative the last couple of years. This number's still really conservative, being just 1.8% over what we're collecting right now. We're right now currently about 3.3% over the budget currently, so I think it's still a pretty conservative number. We'll get into much more detail next week on what...
So really, it factors in the new dedicated sales taxes?
That doesn't have any factor.
No factor?
No factor.
I'm sorry, did I misread it at 3%? I thought for sure this...
Nope. It is, it's 3% sales tax from adopt the budget to propose budget.
Okay.
But that does not include the increase because of the new tax. That new tax for this first year, we're going to keep that separate so that we can look at over, look at apples to apples instead of apples to oranges.
Okay, I apologize, but I'm, yeah, I apologize, I'm probably not understanding, but you're saying it's only 1.8%, and then it says 3%. What's the difference between those two?
So the 3% is adopt, 2019 adopted to 2020 proposed. The 1.8 is 2019 forecast versus 2020 proposed.
I follow, thank you.
Yes, sorry, I was not clear.
Great. That's it for me.
Other questions from council?
So as usual, I will ask, are you going to send us this PowerPoint?
Of course, please, thank you.
Because there's a couple of slides I want to look at some numbers on.
Yeah.
And then the other question I had was, December 5th is a Thursday?
It's gotta be December 3rd.
Okay, that's what I...
That was a typo, I'm sorry about that.
That's, no, that's okay, I just went, hmm, okay.
Yes, you are correct, and I did look at that sign going...
Okay, great, so that's...
So December 3rd.
For adopting the budget.
For adopting the budget.
Good catch. Tuesday, December 3rd.
Yep. Okay. And anything else, we'll wait until next Monday.
Okay.
Great.
I'm good, I'll wait till Monday.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you have, have you emailed us the link? Do we have hard copies? We can...
You have the link, you will have a hard copy in your box tomorrow.
Okay.
They are currently being printed.
About what time do you think?
What time tomorrow? Afternoon.
After...
Probably three-ish.
Three-ish, okay, great.
And I can have Karen send all of you an email when they're in your boxes. How does that sound?
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Members of council, Levi Lloyd, Director of City Operations. It was requested, did I come in and give a brief overview of the single stream recycling program in the city of Durango, where we're at, where we've been, where we're headed? I'm gonna do just a quick overview. We have two different customer classes. We have residential, and it's important to understand that for our residential customers, the city of Durango is a closed market. The city of Durango is the only one that can legally offer service to residences in the city of Durango. Commercial classes, it is an open market, so there are four other providers that can offer service to commercial class. But currently, we have just over 5,000 trash customers in our residential customer class, and about 4,700 single stream customers, residential customers. You can see the breakdown, we have 559 trash customers, commercial trash customers, about 423 single stream customers, 182 OCC, and this is old corrugated cardboard containers, boxes from Amazon is the best analogy I can offer on that, and 129 glass customers. So this is the amount of material, we track this every year, so going back for the last five years, you can see the tons of landfill material has been averaged around 10,000 tons per year. Our recycled material since 2014 has averaged just under 4,000 tons. The important thing to look at is our diversion rate, and you can see that our diversion rate, the average over the last five years, is 27%. And to put that into perspective, the goal, the stated goal by the state of Colorado for the greater Colorado area, this is outside of the front range, is 15% in 2036. The average diversion rate right now in the state of Colorado is just 12%. You can see we're double the, currently, we're just about double what the 2036 goal for greater Colorado is. So I want to talk about some of our end markets in the state of recycling in 2019. And I know that's, a lot of press is put to what we're recycling, but that recycling is being landfilled, so why should we recycle? We have partnered with Freeman Recycling since 2015. They are a very stable partner for us. They're located in Albuquerque, New Mexico. All Freeman does is recycling. They have MRF facilities in Colorado, Arizona, Texas, and they have access to a number of markets. Right now, recycled markets are strained, but they're stable. The recycling industry is continuing to adjust by the Chinese regulatory intervention in 2018. This is more commonly referred to as National Sword. And I do want to make a clarification on that. A lot of people think National Sword was China saying, "We will no longer accept your recycling." That is not the case. What they did was put an artificially low contamination rate. I think it was about 2%. Can't meet that contamination rate, and it is not economical to send a full container ship to China, to have it rejected, and then have to pay for it to come back. So they essentially closed their markets without saying, "We are not taking your recycling anymore." It's estimated that there will be roughly $3 billion in investments globally in the next two years for new mills and mill conversions, and this is in the United States and globally. The demand right now is slow, and this is due to downturn in global manufacturing and the current shade war with China has a significant impact. We are lucky that we partner with Freeman. Again, this is all they do, they have consistent buyers for all their recycled material, and then any backlog they have, they have significant storage so they can take. If they don't have buyers for 3-7 plastics, they can save those up until the buyer needs additional material. Their facility, I don't remember the size of their facility in Albuquerque, but it is, it's about the size of downtown Durango, so they can store a lot of material. Typically, the most difficult material to get rid of is those 3-7 plastics. Everything else has fairly stable markets. We reached out to Freeman Recycling, and I wanted to put this quote here because I do think it's important. This is directly from David Freeman, and basically, all the recycled, recovered recyclables we process are being sent to end markets for remanufacturing. None are being landfilled. And they, of course, didn't want to give us specific markets, but they did give us areas of where the material is going, the different materials that we recycle. You can see all these are our single stream materials that we collect and where they are going, the geographic area that they're going to. But again, I think it's, I really want to emphasize that nothing that the city of Durango puts in their recycled containers is being landfilled. And that's, I wanted to just give a brief overview and then open this up to you, any questions you might have. So, thank you.
Very helpful, thank you for that, that's interesting. Councilors? So you said it's not legal for residential service to be provided by anyone other than the city? Why is that?
City code, and I don't...
It's just a state law.
So state law, it says cities have to...
It allows, it allows cities, the state law allows cities to do it. So, and the code provides for it, but the state law also provides that cities can't mandate a service for commercial users, so that's why it's an open market for commercial users.
So are you saying that the city has to do the recycling?
No.
Or the trash? So the city could choose to have an outside vendor do that?
Could.
Could. But right now, under the city code, it doesn't work that way?
That's right.
Okay.
And more accurately, because the city's doing the trash service, what they can do is, effectively, what we do is bill everyone for the service. If they want to, you know, haul their own or whatever, they can do that, but the city effectively, everyone gets charged for the residential trash service.
Right, I understand. That's interesting, because I wasn't aware of that, so that's...
There is a state law that dates back probably into the 70s.
That allows for the city to do that?
Allows cities to do that.
And the city has been providing trash service for residents, I think, since before 1950, so...
Mr. Lloyd, do I detect some optimism about the market for recyclables compared to the last time we had this conversation?
You did. You know, I think the last time I was here to talk about recycling, we were talking about the surcharge. So in 2018, with part of that, the National Sword, markets understandably, they essentially crashed. We had a huge backlog. Freeman Recycling came to us, and we are being charged $25 sort fee on all of our single stream. We enacted the surcharge at that time, and I am on record at that meeting saying that when the markets rebound and that surcharge goes away, the surcharge on your bill will go away. So we stay in pretty constant contact with Freeman Recycling just to see where markets are. You know, again, 3-7 plastics are difficult, and then paper are difficult right now. That was the bulk of what was going to China and being recycled. Freeman is optimistic that with this investment in plants, this $3 billion that they're estimating in the next two years, that that's essentially going to turn this around. You know, 18 months ago, they said, "New markets will come online." That's happened. So I think in two years, probably, the, right now, we have a tremendous backlog of material that is generated daily, and then what backed up after the closing of the Chinese market. So we're working through that backlog, and then with new plants coming online in the next two years, I think we see a reverse in where we're at right now.
That's great news. I mean, that was a much more dire picture just a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
I have a question about the Southwest Colorado Council of Governments, I believe, is working on glass recycling in a regional area. Do, any news on that or updates on that?
I don't have any news on that. We, as you may know, so we used to have a public drop-off located at 32nd Street and then down behind Wagon Wheel Liquors. Those were notorious. We were, we were landfilling the majority of what was collected there because it was contaminated. When we closed those and went to public drop-off just at the recycle center, our contamination rates evaporated. We are now, we, very rarely do we have to throw any glass away. If contamination does get in there, we can go in and retrieve that relatively easy before it contaminates the rest of the load. There are a number, I think Farm to Table is offering glass recycling to residences. They will actually pick up your glass recycling, they bring it to us. And there's another startup company that is offering trash and recycling countywide, and they are offering glass recycling as well. And then we have 129 customers, mostly restaurants, some liquor stores, and then the college is a big customer of ours for glass recycling.
Thank you. I also hear that organic material, and then I think clothes are the number two kind of culprit for filling up landfills in the region here. So I was looking at any efforts either through the Sustainability Program or something along that line, addressing at least the organic material.
So again, Table to Farm, is it Table to Farm? Yes. I always get those, see, I don't want to call it Farm to Table. So Table to Farm right now is offering organic recycling. They have five gallon buckets that you can put out on your recycle days. They come around, they pick those up. They are looking to expand, they are moving into commercial markets with restaurants. But you're right, the organics, composting, food composting is how communities will make the next big step in recycling. Organic waste is a big one. There are some newer technologies out there. Composting is not a great neighbor. Number one, it takes a lot of land, and it's not, it's like living next to the wastewater treatment plant.
So what about green waste? Like when you cut your trees and...
So those can all be, those can all be chipped and composted, so if you were doing composting on a large scale, for instance, all the brown waste we generate during spring and fall cleanup, that could be, that can be added to composting. We've looked at partnering with Table to Farm to take that material. They're just not operating on a large enough scale right now, and they're permitting through the state, they have to run a fairly small operation. They have to run a fairly small operation to move up. They would need additional permitting and much more land than they have. So Mesa County has a large composting facility, and it's several acres. It's probably three football fields wide and three football fields deep, and they just have these winros, and they have to turn those over every couple of days. So it's a, it's a huge, you need a lot of land to do it or some newer technologies. And there are some newer technologies.
So what is the city doing with its organic material?
So right now, we don't, we don't have composting. It's through Table to Farm is the composting agent.
So we have no organized program for taking care of our own organic material?
No.
Well, I've lived places where green waste was not composted. It was actually like chipped up and done, they did other things, but then they sold it. It was actually a money-making operation.
So we give our chipped material away, everything that we generate through chipping the green waste during spring and fall cleanup. We have free mulch days. We chip all that material. We dump it up by Vandahl Landfill. Then the week after the program is over, we have, we advertise in the local paper, and it's first come, first served. And we, we get rid of all of that material. We offer it Friday and Saturday. The last two years, I think, we've been done by 2 o'clock on Friday. So it goes, it goes fast.
I was just saying, as part of our sustainability effort, it would be great to see some partnerships and efforts around addressing our own contributions to a filling landfill. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for doing that last minute. We appreciate that. All right, moving on to the review of the consent agenda. Ms. Phillips, may we have a reading?
Item 5.1 through 5.3, approval minutes. 5.1, study session September 10, 2019. 5.2, the regular meeting of September 17, 2019. 5.3, special meeting of September 24, 2019. Items 5.4 through 5.8 are discussion and possible action items. 5.4 concerns resolution R.201938, authorizing the submission of a grand applicable to the State Board of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund for construction of Lake Night Horse Recreation Area Swim Beach. 5.5 concerns resolution R.201939, adopting the Infrastructure Advisory Board. 5.6 concerns resolution R.201940, adopting the Strategy and Long-Term Advisory Board. 5.7 concerns resolution R.201941, authorizing additional appropriation to the General Fund for a Community Development Lot Grant 19-047. Items 5.8 through 5.11 are requests for public hearings with the proposed date of October 15, 2019. 5.8 is to consider revisions to Chapter 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango related to alcoholic beverages. 5.9 is to consider the Baroko Lot 1 Minor Subdivision Preliminary Platte 780 Hidden Valley Circle. 5.10 is to consider a preliminary minor subdivision for Twin Buttes Phase 1 filing 1B Lot 55. 5.11 is to consider text amendments to the Land Use and Development Code, Commercial Design Guide, and Downtown Overlay District Design Guidelines. And item 5.12 is discussion and possible action concerning resolution R.201942, authorizing additional appropriation to the Transprestation Services Fund for Transit Fleet Replacement.
Thank you. Do we have any counselor that would like to remove an item this evening?
5.7 and 5.12, please.
And I'd like to talk about 5.5.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items 5.5, 5.7, and 5.12.
Second. Ms. Phillips, who you have the roll call?
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Patine?
Yes.
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Yussit?
Yes.
Item 5.5?
Yes, my question was, and I know we're going to talk about the advisory boards, and those that have responsibility for tax funds will come up. I just wanted a question for the city attorney with regard to the resolution, because I'm concerned that we have people with financial background serving on these committees. And unless I missed it, I don't see anything, and I know we're going to talk about it. So what would be the process if we passed this resolution, and then we want to have someone with financial background serving on this committee and any other committee where the person, where the committee serves to oversee some of the tax dollars?
Excuse me, either you could amend the resolution tonight to add that provision, or you could amend it later, if you need time to add it.
And the process to amend it at a later date would just be that somebody brings it up, and we go through a motion process?
Yes.
Nothing too difficult? Okay.
Yeah.
That's my question, taken care of?
Okay.
So my question, oh, do we want to go ahead and approve that first?
We could do that.
Do you want to make a motion, Barbara? Do you want me to?
Motion to approve a consent agenda, item number 5.5.
Second. Further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Patine?
Yes.
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Yussit?
Yes.
5.7?
5.7, I just had a, kind of a quick question. The description was a little bit confusing for me. So the $487,000 that's being moved from new grant funds, where's that money coming from?
Hi, good evening. So yes, so this is a CDBG block of grant. So we were awarded a three-year grant for 2019 through 2021. So it's a three-year grant, the Homes Fund, it's a grant that we pass through to the Homes Fund, and they support the housing program. So it's coming from the, through the feds, through the state, and then we pass it on through the Homes Fund. So they spent their first year, in the first seven months of 2019, so now they're asking for second years because they have funding and programs that they need that funding for. I do have Lisa here tonight. She can hit some highlights, she would like to hit some highlights on what the program is and what they've been doing for the housing in the area. Unless you have any other questions on the...
I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
So I have a presentation. I'll do my best to make it quick. Here we go. So I think everyone knows me, but for those of you who are watching, my name is Lisa Blumquist Palmer. I'm the executive director for Homes Fund. And Homes Fund provides a homebuyer assistance program. It's a three-pronged program that consists of homebuyer education, housing counseling, and mortgage assistance. Additionally, we offer manufactured and mobile home financing and pre-development financing for developers of affordable housing. I'm going to go over a few slides that note the problem. City council, I believe that you already, again, know the scope of the problem, but according to the Housing in the Southwest Colorado 2019 update published by Region 9, our rents are extraordinarily high and getting, and getting higher. In order to afford a three-bedroom apartment, a household would need to make $70,000 per year. The cost of homeownership is also out of reach for many of our workforce households. The median home price in Durango, when this survey, when this study was completed, was $399,000. I believe it's actually closer to $100,000 higher than that now. And you would need an income of at least approximately $78,000 in order to be able to afford to purchase that median home. So a recent study was published that noted that Colorado is the fifth most expensive state relative to salaries to purchase a home, only behind Hawaii, Washington DC, California, and Massachusetts. I guess we're the fourth state, but Washington DC is in there. Cost burden is an issue that has been brought up in this council, and I thought that this was actually a really interesting graph. So cost burden, very intuitively, most highly affects the lower-income spectrum of people. So as you can see, this graph just kind of goes, it goes down as you, as you go to the right. So of course, the people who are under 30% of area median income are most affected by being cost burdened. But when we're comparing La Plata County to the state of Colorado, it's interesting that the lowest-income folks, people who are under 60% AMI, La Plata County is actually doing better than the state overall as far as cost-burdened people. But when we get into the 60% to 80% AMI and above, people in La Plata County are actually more cost-burdened than the average in Colorado, which is just an interesting, it's an interesting phenomenon. Who Homes Fund is serving is generally the folks who are in between 60% and 125% of area median income. So this graph really kind of gives credence that that population needs particular help. This, this graph was taken directly from the Durango Housing Study. I believe you all have seen it before, but pretty much that dotted line at the bottom is wages. They're going up, but just barely creeping up, and the home prices in Durango are that top green line going up at a pretty steep incline. So the Homes Fund programs help to bridge that gap between our low workforce wages and high home prices. So for homebuyers who are purchasing within the city of Durango, we have $68,000 in mortgage assistance available. That mortgage assistance is all shared appreciation mortgage assistance, so it's at 0% interest. There are no payments on that. It is due on sale or refinance of the home. That $68,000 can really significantly help a household to overcome the gap. Homebuyer education ensures that folks understand what they're getting themselves into and get into a sustainable housing situation. During our housing counseling sessions, we provide in-depth information about a household's budget, go over their credit with them, really make sure that they get the financial education if it's customized to their household.
Not to interrupt you, but could you go back one more? I just want to clarify, that's $68,000 for each homebuyer?
Correct.
Not in total?
Correct.
Because it's not...
Correct. I apologize for that lack of clarity.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Correct. So that $68,000 is, is made up of $28,000 of the CDBG money that, that the, that the council is, that we're proposed to renew that CDBG money, that comes from the feds to the state, to the city, to Homes Fund. And then $15,000 of CDFI fund money, and we get a direct award from the CDFI Fund, which is a part of the US Department of Treasury. And then $25,000 of that is from the city's Fair Share Funds. So really, it takes $68,000 for a household that is under 80% of area median income to get into homeownership in our community, given our high home prices. And so we have to stack those various, those various sources of funds. Does that make sense? Okay? Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure that we didn't think it was a total of $68,000.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I appreciate that clarification. So I wanted to go over some of our outcomes and just make sure that the council is, how could I give you regular updates? So at the end of the, actually, these are second quarter, no, these are third-quarter numbers. 2,222 households have been through homebuyer education class. 1,417 households have been through, through housing counseling. 238 households have received mortgage assistance. That totals $7.2 million in mortgage assistance provided, and $50 million in homes have been purchased using Homes Fund's assistance. 871 households that have used our programs and services have gone on to homeownership. And we, we go through our class records, and we compare that to public records for, to determine that number. So not everyone who goes through our homebuyer education class necessarily receives mortgage assistance funds from us, but they do go on to purchase a home and use that information that they gained in that homebuyer education class. So the city of Durango, specific outcomes. We have provided mortgage assistance to 75 low and moderate-income Durango households, helping them to reach affordable and sustainable homeownership in our community. Those 75 households contained 163 people. Two, over 2.5 million in mortgage assistance loans have been provided. This includes both the fair share fee in lieu, as well as $2.1 million in, in other funds. So the fair share fee in lieu, money is leveraged with other funds. The average amount of mortgage assistance per household is 60, I'm sorry, $34,617. The amount of mortgage assistance that we've been able to provide per household has fluctuated over time and depending on which programs we have available. Almost $19 million in homes have been purchased in the city limits using the Homes Fund mortgage assistance. And the average home purchase price for those using Homes Fund is $252,782. So, you know, a modest home, you can, still can find a home that is around $250,000 in Durango, but it's getting more and more rare. So this is just a little bit of a word cloud with some of our professions, of folks who, who have gotten our assistance. And we've got people who work for Worldpay, people who work for Pueblo Community College, people who are in construction, Access Health, et cetera, et cetera. Here are a couple of our homebuyers. Maybe some of you will recognize some of these faces. Wanted to give you a brief update on fair share. 10 fair share units are, will fulfill the Mountain Trace obligation. One was built about a decade ago. One was just completed and purchased, and the rest are under construction. There is also one fair share unit in Eastside Lofts, which is located over on 8th and College. And I wanted to thank you for passing through the CDBG funds. Like Julie said, it's $487,000 that, just, that's the second tranche of money that is, again, being passed from the state on, through, through the city to Homes Fund as part of our three-year contract. The reason that we're actually pulling these funds early is because we deployed more money in La Plata County than we had originally budgeted for. We are having a record-breaking year this year. We have surpassed $1 million in mortgage assistance provided for the first time in Homes Fund's history. So we're very excited about that. Also, thank you for allocating fair share fee in lieu to mortgage assistance activities and for supporting the homebuyer assistance program in general. And I also wanted to invite all of you, and really anyone who's listening, who is a supporter of affordable housing in our community, to come to our annual event. It will be on Thursday, November 7, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Sorrel Sky Gallery. I'll be sending you all more information about that, but I would love to see all of you there. We'll be celebrating a record-breaking year and having some, some recipients of our program speak. It'll be, a good time will be had by all.
Great.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Lisa, thanks for your presentation, and congratulations on all the success. I thought the number of 870-some placements out of your 2,222 students was impressive to say the least. That's really awesome. Do you have any sense of what proportion of those might be within the city limits? Just estimate it? I saw the total numbers.
Got it. Like, I mean, I can tell you like the number of mortgage assistance, loans that we've provided in the city, but I, I just don't have that information off at the top.
I'd be curious if when you went through, did the county records, if...
If we could flag some of the city ones?
I'd just be curious. I mean, it'd be interesting to know what proportion of our 9,000 or so residences have been impacted by your program. I just thought that number was really significant, and thanks for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you very much. We, I'll certainly look into tracking that and try and tamp down all the moods I hear from the staff.
Lisa, I also, first of all, thank you. It's a very helpful presentation. I hope you'll send it to us.
Yes.
And, you know, The Herald's been doing stories on manufactured homes, mobile home parks, and the number in the county here and the threat to the people living there. And I wondered if the Homes Fund is doing anything or if you're thinking about any work in that area.
So our manufactured and mobile home program is to help people to purchase their unit, even if their unit is in a park that is owned by someone else. The more ownership in a community, hopefully, would, would promote some stability in that community. The more ownership in a community, hopefully would promote some stability in that community. Really, what would be more of a solution than that, though, is for the owners of the units in the community to band together and form a resident-owned community so that they could really take control of their own destiny. There is an organization, I'm more than happy to connect any sort of interested parties with the organization that does facilitate that. Thistle is out of Boulder, and they have facilitated a couple of manufactured home communities becoming resident-owned communities. And also Resident-Owned Communities Rock USA is an organization that I've been in touch with in the past. We have found with our manufactured and mobile home loan program that the extraordinarily high lot rents are really impacting affordability very significantly, as was pointed out in that series of articles that was published in The Sun and in the Durango Herald. There are a few parks that keep their rates lower. We just closed, actually, this week, we closed a loan to a young man who was purchasing in the Meadowbrook Park in Ignacio, and their lot rents are $350 a month versus about $650 a month for a lot of the North Valley parks. And so because the lot rents were $350 a month, he was able to afford to buy his unit. And it was a more sustainable situation for him. We certainly need more communities that are like that. You know, the owners of that particular community were wonderful to work with. They're very civically minded people who are part of the community. They're actually living in the community, and they want what's best for their residents. The more communities that could look just like that, the better. But it's a hard conundrum, certainly, because, yeah, too many people are getting victimized because they are somewhat trapped.
Well, thank you for your work and for this presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Appreciate that. Moving on to, let's see, 5.12. First of all, we need a motion for 5.7.
Motion to approve item 5.7.
Any further discussion, council? Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Patine?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Yousaf?
Yes.
So my question, it sounds like that the city is fronting money that will then come back, so there's no overall cost to the city. But I was going to request that when that funding actually came through, that we're notified, so the council...
So that's how this is working. So we, this item for the public is a special appropriation or additional appropriation of the Transportation Services Fund for Transit Fleet Replacement. The Transportation Services Department applied for a grant for a bus replacement for three of our mini buses that are due for replacement. However, the way that the grant timing works, we didn't have the grant award during the budget process last year. So we have received the grant award. The funding is awarded to the city. We make the purchase. As soon as the purchase is done, just like with all of the grants that we receive, we do a reimbursement request and then we get a check. So I'm happy to let the council know when the check comes through.
Perfect.
But we will not appropriate the funding for the project until we have the final grant award.
Excellent. And I have a question, Amber, about the greening of our fleet, if you will. So could you talk to that and how these new vehicles might begin to address that?
So we are looking at how we could possibly move forward towards either electric fleet, hybrid fleet, a greener fleet than we currently have. We have gone from back and forth between gasoline diesel. The diesel is actually much cleaner with the current technologies. And we're working with other agencies in the state. So the way that we are purchasing these buses is off of a consolidated contract with the state of Colorado. So all of the agencies in the state are looking to find the best way to move forward with cleaner vehicles. So at this point in time, we are not purchasing electric fleet or CNG. It's just a standard, I believe these are diesel engines. But we are looking at that, and we're really looking at it as part of the statewide consortium.
Okay, thank you. I just was impressed when we had the electric bus in town.
Yes.
Last, in spring, and I'm hopeful that we can move toward that end relatively soon to meet our renewable goals. Thank you.
Yes, so we are looking at that.
Thank you. Can I motion, please, council?
A motion to approve item 5.12.
Second. Further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Patine?
Yes.
Councilor Noseworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Yousaf?
Yes. I don't believe we have any additional public participation. Okay. Moving on to our public hearings tonight, we have one legislative and policy-related hearing. This is an opportunity for citizens to provide formal input into our decision-making process. It's intentionally organized to ensure fairness and transparency to all party. We welcome all public testimony. I don't see any this evening. We do limit comments to three minutes. The structure for the hearing is we're going to have a presentation from city staff. We will have any public testimony, if we had any. We will have questions from council at that time. And with that, we're going to be talking about a public hearing to consider adoption of the 2019 Parks Open Space Trails and Recreation Master Plan. Ms. Metz?
Good evening, Mayor Yousaf, and members of the city council. I have a bit of a cold, so excuse me.
Oh, no.
This is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2019 Parks Open Space Trails and Recreation Master Plan. If adopted, the master plan will become a component of the City of Durango Comprehensive Plan. We thought it would be helpful to discuss, since the adoption of the current master plan, which was adopted by city council in 2010, what has been accomplished in the last 10 years since the adoption of the 2010 Parks Open Space Trails Recreation Master Plan. Since that time, we've added 1,516 acres of open space and parkland, and that's either been through fee title acquisition or dedication or donation of land to the city. The trail system is well-developed, and currently we have 112 miles of hard surface and natural surface trails in the system, and that translates to 15.8 miles of hard surface trails and 96.3 miles of natural surface trails. The city uses a level of service methodology for parks planning, and that has been really helpful to us in the last decade with new developments coming online. And good examples of that are in Three Springs and in Twin Buttes, where the developer is actually responsible to develop park and trail amenities, and that's then maintained by the city. So that's been very helpful to accomplish that. In 2015, the Parks and Recreation Department became nationally accredited by the National Recreation and Park Association, and we maintain that accreditation to the present day. We also worked with the community to have the support of the Durango voters to reauthorize the 1999 Half-Cent Sales and Use Tax in 2015 for parks and recreation purposes. We opened the 11,710 square foot Durango Gymnastics Facility in Bodo in 2017 to expand those recreation programs for gymnasts. We also worked in partnership with Fort Lewis College to develop the 17-acre Smith Sports Complex, which was completed in 2012, and the nine-and-a-half acre Durango Softball Complex and Tennis Courts in 2018. And then the most recent accomplishment from the master plan timeline has been to open Lake Night Horse Recreation Area, which is over 1,926 acres of land to the public for recreation in 2018. So the process of updating the 2010 master plan was primarily accomplished, or the implementation of the master plan was primarily accomplished because of the two voter-approved dedicated funding sources. The 2005 Quartercent Sales and Use Tax, which we call the Open Space Parks and Trails Fund, because it's used for the preservation, maintenance, and acquisition of natural lands and the creation and maintenance of parks and trails, as well as the 2015 Half-Cent Sales and Use Tax, which we call the 2015 Half-Cent Fund. And that is involved with the construction and maintenance of recreation facilities, parks, trails, pedestrian and bicycle improvements, maintenance facilities used by the Parks and Recreation Department and the urban forest. So the update of this current master plan that we initiated two years ago in September of 2017, there's been a series of public meetings on the update of the master plan, including two general meetings, one at the beginning of the process, and the most recent in July of 2019, where we did a presentation of the draft master plan. There were over 200 people attending those public meetings on the master plan in those instances. There's been a series of study sessions with the city council, and specifically during the process, two study sessions with the council and the steering committee, as well as three additional meetings of the master plan steering committee. And as technical reports were released throughout the last two years and posted on the project website, we've had monthly updates to the Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The master plan process included stakeholder interviews involving 15 key leaders in our community, three focus groups with 25 participants, and a statistically balanced survey with 496 responses. In addition, there are 1,184 individuals that responded to the online survey as well in the master plan process. We've tried to keep the master plan process up to date because there was a project website that kept the community informed. We had a city council study session on the 17th of September. There were some recommendations from the council, and we've attached the agenda documentation, those changes that are now incorporated in the September version of the master plan, which is currently online and before you. We also went through a series of approval processes with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board. Both boards have recommended the approval of the master plan in their August meetings to the city council. And the Durango Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 19th regarding the adoption of the 2019 Parks Open Space and Trails Master Plan. And the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the plan, taking into consideration the agenda documentation-attached items that they also receive on the revisions that you have to the 2019 plan. The 2019 master plan involves a number of big moves, and we'd like to review those briefly with you. We want to connect our trails, particularly the Smart 160 Hard Surface Trail East and West and the Animal River Trail, our main spine. Want to sustain dedicated funding, implement the Durango Mesa Park Plan, enhance branding, marketing, and telling the story of the Parks and Recreation Department to the community, address aging facilities and infrastructure, new parks and recreation facilities, existing recreation center expansion, or build a new multipurpose, multi-use facility at another location, continue to seek alternative funding for new development and operational funds and capital improvements, maintain and upgrade existing facilities, and continue to develop and enhance Lake Night Horse Recreation Area. In summary, the master plan has been an extensive two-year process, and the master plan will provide guidance to the city for the next five to 10 years. So that concludes my general overview to the council. I suppose we can, if the council's so willing, to open the public hearing, and then we can come back and answer questions.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Do we have any public hearing tonight? Any public participation? Okay. So appreciate that update. Thank you very much. Recognize it has been a long process in action here. So, councilors, I think that we have had several submissions from councilors of questions that they wanted to kind of address in this process, and maybe it would be wise to systematically go through some of those.
That would be great. And so I'm going to pass around, if you're willing, councilors, some of the questions from Councilor Baxter and Councilor Noseworthy. And so these are sent to us prior to that, and we are prepared to go through responses. If you would like us to do that, if that would be helpful to the council.
If councilors are still wanting more information or... So we have requested a couple changes in the documentation that you suggested did address those as well. It's also in our documentation packet. I appreciate that. Councilor Noseworthy or Councilor Baxter, would either of you like to start?
Just get my thoughts to you here. So first of all, thank you for this effort and for community engagement. And I noticed that you have made some changes. I continue to be concerned that, for me, I would expect a master plan to help prioritize the limited funding that may be available over the next 10 years. And I don't see that in the document as it currently exists. So that remains a concern. And I think it really needs to be realistic. As I laid out in the questions, you know, for me, I think that we've done a lot, and I recognize that, and applaud the department and the city staff and the advisory boards for the progress that has been made in the past 10 years. But I remain concerned that we really look at what is feasible and that be what we, that we focus on and still have a separate list, as we've had in previous discussions, of what could be. Is that page like 202 or something like that?
Yeah, so in the master plan, what we've got is on page 179, first it talks a little bit about the process that we go through in terms of prioritization. This is a really important item, not only for the city council, but for the council-appointed advisory boards. And so in an earlier draft of the master plan, we actually, the consultants came forward with a prioritization. And at the request of the advisory boards and the city council, we changed that. And so what we made it clear is that we have a list of community-driven projects. So these are projects that came to us from the community, and they're listed here on subsequent pages to 180 and 181. And they're not prioritized intentionally. What they're done is it's sort of grouping them according to the type of project that they are. Is it a trail connection? Is it a new trail? Is it an upgrade of an existing trail? Is it a new park? Is it an upgrade of an existing park? You know, so it groups it according to the type of project it is. And what we do every year, and it describes this process on page 179, is we update our strategic plan annually, and that's the process that we go through with our city council advisory boards. That involves the Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and the Multimodal Advisory Board. And so those three boards really assist with the prioritization of projects. They use the master plan as a foundational document, but they also look at current conditions. And then they help prioritize, okay, what is next in the list of projects that we should accomplish in the next five years? And that's captured in the strategic plan. And then from there, we use that information to develop the next upcoming budget. And so I think that what we're trying to do in the master plan is to give a overview of the importance of why these projects are there, because if there's gaps in service or there's a level of service that's lacking. But also, we also have a process where we look at this every year in the development of the budget.
The, um, thank you. It's also, I'd like to let more clarity on our forest management plan, and because that deadline's coming up pretty soon, 2025. And I must have, maybe I missed it in here, the section of actually achieving that plan, which I think was 3,000 new trees planted.
Right. And so the master plan does reference the community forest plan in the beginning of the document on page two and three. What we did is we said, we added a section that talked about the relationship between the master plan and the City of Durango Comprehensive Plan, that it's a component of it. And also, we talked about the other plans that built into this plan, including the community forest plan. That was adopted in 2014. And since that time, we have planted, since 2014, we have planted 1,715 trees.
Are those new trees or replacement trees?
Correct, new trees. And so that is expanding the canopy of trees in the city of Durango. So the community forest plan in 2014... So the Community Forest Plan in 2014 said, we want to add new trees, 3,000 new trees by 2025. And so because we've already, since 2014, added 1,715, that's 2014 through 2018, we think we'll exceed that goal and not have a problem. I think we'll go higher than the number of trees that have been identified in the Community Forest Plan.
Aren't there 75 trees a year scheduled for in the CIP project?
The, um, there's two funding sources for the Community Forest. The first is in the operating budget. We'll talk about this at our meeting on Monday. But there's an operating budget in the Parks Division that plants trees and funds the planting of trees. And then there's also a CIP project in the Capital Improvement Program that plants the 75 trees that you're referencing. And so those two funding sources are the city-planted trees. So other things that come into fruition in terms of, you know, the Community Forest planting trees in city parks or along the streets by the city staff, and those are the numbers of trees that we count that we've planted. But other things that occur is in projects that we do, improvement projects, those trees are added. And certainly developers, as they are adding streets in the community and they're responsible to plant street trees, those trees get added to our inventory. And so all of these trees, this 1,715, we didn't plant, the city didn't plant, but they increase by the canopy of city-maintained trees. So this number is just a reflection of the city-maintained trees. So, but it's not all planted by staff.
So you're saying that 1,700 is a reflection of the city-maintained trees?
So the 1,715 are the new trees that have been planted between 2014 and 2018.
But not specifically under the Community Forest Plan?
Yes. And so the Community Forest Plan wanted to see a total of 3,000 trees from 2014 to 2025. And so we're just saying we're making progress towards the implementation of the Community Forest Plan.
I'm confused. Who's planting the trees? You just said the city's not planting.
So we are planting some of these trees, but contractors are planting others, developers are planting many trees for the city and their city, they're going to be maintained by the Parks and Recreation Department, but they've been planted by a contractor.
Three Springs.
Three Springs is a good example. Twin Buttes is another good example. Those are areas where there's been a lot of trees added to our canopy.
So on the subject of trees, I'm also concerned because you gave a really helpful presentation on the fire adaptive partnership. And I remember, I couldn't do the math in my head real quickly, but you talked about this year we'll probably do a 2,200 linear foot fire mitigation and a 6,000. And so I did the math at 46 miles. That would take us 30 years to address our fire mitigation proposed, uh, supposed need. So, and I didn't see anything addressed here in that. And that seems to be an emerging issue in light of the increased fires around the west. And so I was wondering, did I miss it in here or is there a plan to discuss that?
Certainly there is reference to the stewardship of our open space in the master plan. In terms of the recent conversation that we had with the city council about the wildland urban interface and our effort to mitigate those areas in the city limits, primarily in the Crestview area with Overin Mountain Park and the Skyridge area with the Horse Gulch. Those two areas were identified with our fire partners to be good areas to start that close interface. We have been doing fire mitigation since 2005 in our open space, but it's been more internal to the parks, not right next to people's backyards. And so this is the first time that we've gotten so close to people's homes. And so we feel like it's really important to do this process carefully and do good public outreach. That's why we sent letters to all the individual property owners and making sure that they were aware, come to the meeting. We have site visits scheduled for this week. So we're going out to the areas by their homes to show them generally how this methodology will be done. The thing that's important is that we do this well because we want this to be successful and so that we get support from the community to continue the program. We also, because of the partnership that we have formed, we've got good connection with grants. And we're also working with Durango Fire Protection District to be the boots on the ground, so to speak, to do the actual fire mitigation. And so they have capacity of how much they can manage. And so I think that we're starting with a reasonable scope so that we're successful and then we anticipate that we'll be able to pick up the speed and do it so it won't go at this shorter distance forever.
And I appreciate the effort and community engagement and buy-in and agree that's vital. But unless I missed it, I didn't see anything in the list of $332 million that really addressed what kind of finances would be needed in the next 10 years for something like this. Because this too could be a game changer if we don't address it.
Right. And so we certainly are addressing it and the stewardship of open space and the management of open space is something that we have included in that list of projects. In a, not fire mitigation specifically, but the stewardship of our open space is identified. I think one of the things that we've been quite successful at in past fire mitigation efforts is there is quite a bit of federal funds that can help the city. We've already applied for a BLM grant for the current project that's underway. And most of the fire mitigation that we have done in the past has predominantly been funded by either Colorado State Forest Service or the Bureau of Land Management Grant Funds. And so I think that's a very good interface for the city to utilize those funds. Not to say that there wouldn't be a match, or if funding isn't available at a federal level, we wouldn't continue with it using city dollars. But I think that there is some opportunities for that and that's how we have funded it in the past.
And of this list, I've seen quite a few documents that have long, long lists that the advisory boards review. What projects have you actually eliminated that you've said, we've looked at this and we've looked at this and we've looked at this? And going forward, it either will compete with the private sector, it's not going to be financially viable, or it just doesn't make sense to us to continue to do it and we're going to take this off the list for future consideration?
So we haven't really taken projects off the list. I think what we have done is we have a list and will all of those projects be implemented over time? Probably not. But I think that what we have done is we've identified a current list of community-driven priorities that have come to us. And so we're not taking projects off the list, we're just sharing with the community what we have identified as being priority projects to complete. In terms of competing with the private sector, I mean, the master plan does talk about public-private partnerships. And, you know, we've done some good job of that over the years. I think some good examples of that is, you may not know this because you weren't living in the community when Chapman Hill Rink was built, but that was a public-private partnership. We had a million dollars donated by a private individual to build that rink. And so that's a good example of public-private partnership where the community came together with the city to make an improvement that has done great things for many people in our community. And so in terms of competing with the private sector, I think we are, quite honestly, a model of collaboration with the private sector. And a good example of that is our independent contractors that we work with. We work with independent contractors quite a bit at the Durango Community Recreation Center with their fitness trainers. They provide personalized training for people. Oftentimes they do that where it's a 70/30 split, where they get 70% of the revenue, we get 30%. And the other place we have really grown that public-private partnership is at Lake Night Horse. With rentals of facilities at Lake Night Horse, paddling equipment is Four Corners River Sports, and we have a number of independent contractors that are providing sailing lessons and guided fishing. So I don't think that we compete with the private sector. I think we complement services by providing assets where we can work together with the private sector to bring those amenities to our community in a way that perhaps we can't provide ourselves.
Right, thank you. I'll turn it over to others for questions.
Thank you. Councilors?
Yeah. So, as you know, because I wrote this note about the master plan that I could support, I think the Animus River Trail is such a priority and is such a jewel to our community that I believe the master plan needs to speak to bringing it all up to standard as a number one priority. And I'm, once again today, I rode down to Bodo Park and I frequently ride up to the rec center. And those asphalt sections are, in some cases, dangerous. And they deny accessibility to a lot of people who, whether they be in wheelchairs or walkers, given their condition with the roots and the brakes and the asphalt. And it is not, the feedback that I get from people who ride that section, those asphalt sections of the river trail frequently, is that that's not the experience that they expect out of their river trail, which is the spine of our community and probably statistically the most important piece of recreation that we have in our community. And there have been upgrades to the asphalt which are not, they're not a positive thing, they're not negative, but they don't do much for upgrading that feel of the river trail. And so I really feel that this master plan needs to call out the fact that those need to be brought up to our concrete standards now, not five years and six and seven and eight years from now. I realize that you're talking about a prioritization process of how you choose the projects, but I think that one of the things the master plan should do is actually say, here's what needs to be accomplished and it needs to be accomplished now. This master plan does not do that. The CIP project list does not do that. I also didn't see an implementation plan for the Animus River Management Plan. I know you've referenced these, but I really feel like we, and I have not looked through all the other plans that support what Parks and Rec does yet, I haven't had time, there's been a lot, it's a lot of reading. But I don't see an implementation plan there. We've had conversations about the 33rd Street put in for years and years and years. We've had conversations about, I realize that the one down Memorial Park got fixed up, I get that, it's great. But I don't see an implementation plan for that. And so every time we adopt a plan, I think we need to have an implementation plan in it and our master plan should call that out. One of the other things that I'm really concerned about is you mentioned an entire list of all sorts of projects and activities and things that have happened since the 2010 plan, but nowhere is it mentioned, has that improved the health of our community? How did we measure it? Are people healthier? Are they, do they have better well-being physically, mentally? What is the benefit to the community of these? It's all about activities and projects. And I really think that we need to focus on what's enhancing the health of our community. That's what Parks and Rec to me is about. I don't see that in the master plan. I also think that...
Should we answer some of these questions?
No, I'm just telling you what I don't believe is in the master plan. You've seen these, you have plenty of time to answer them.
And I'm prepared to do that tonight.
So I'm not, I'm just reiterating them. So I believe that in our open space plans, we should be looking at what is it that we want to do with our open space plan about connectivity, gaps and types of uses, identifying areas that could be accessibly used. You know, there's a lot of states and a lot of communities that have specific parks that are accessible to people. And we don't have, there's nothing about that in our master plan. What reserve balances would be appropriate for open space purchase reserves? We just talked about $500,000 a year going into an open space reserve and we don't talk about what's appropriate, what we might be looking at. There's no conversation about what are appropriate maintenance reserves for all the new projects that we, or the projects we have, the new projects that we start. What is the significant cost going in there? That's not discussed directly in the master plan. Our underserved populations, which are accessible needs, and also Three Springs are not, I don't believe are spoken to well enough. And I also believe that we may not directly compete with private enterprise, but we preempt them. And we preempt them by saying possibly down the road, we will build something. And when the city says something like that, private enterprise is not going to step up and do it. So I don't think it's a thing of competition necessarily, I think it's a preemption in many ways. So those are my concerns and the master plan doesn't speak to that and that's just, I don't, I'm not expecting a response.
So I think it would be helpful for us to respond if I may.
And I would like it if you did because I too, you know, we are here to potentially adopt this. And so I think Councilor Baxter brings up some very good points that are very worthy of discussion tonight and that's why I wanted to go through them. I appreciate she bringing, you know, she did send us these in advance, which was great so that we could see those. But I would love to hear, you know, it's important for me at least as myself to hear your response to some of Councilor Baxter's points.
Right. So let's talk about first the Animus River Trail and in terms of what is in the master plan about the prioritization. And just because we've started here with the map, this is on page 121. And it talks about the reconstruction of existing sections of the Animus River Trail that would be upgraded from the current asphalt condition to the standard that we are using now for concrete. And the number one on the list, this is again on the map, is the River City Hall to the Durango Powerhouse Science Center. It's in Iris Park and Riverfront Park. And that is currently scheduled to go out to bid this year in 2019 for construction. And so that project is number one. It's probably the worst section of the trail.
And just a question on that, is that full reconstruction?
Yes, so complete removal and replacement. We have done some patching of existing sections of concrete trail, or existing sections of asphalt trail. But this is a replacement, removal and replacement with concrete.
And what's the mileage of that?
Uh, it's not a mile, is it?
No, I'm sorry, 1,000 feet, so.
And when was, that's $900,000, right? Do I have that amount right?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand. And when was that appropriated?
That was appropriated, I want to say, a year ago. We found some structural issues that we need to be addressed by the Powerhouse Science Center and we had to bring in a structural engineer to do a more thorough analysis. And we have gotten the information that we need from the structural engineer and we now have construction documents that are ready to go.
But no construction will start yet this year because it's October?
Probably not. You know, with the bidding process starting this month in October, it takes a while. But, you know, we generally have good luck in building the Animus River Trail in the winter. Oftentimes, it depends, of course, on the winter, but oftentimes it's a really good time and we have less conflict because this is going to be a heavily used section of the trail and it's difficult to build the trail, you know, so many people are using it in the summer. And so we do hope actually for winter, early spring construction.
I don't want to interject with Kim's comments, but Baxter, Councilor Baxter's comments, but I think there's like four or five sections of the trail that still need to be upgraded to concrete. And I don't...
That's correct, they're on this map.
Right.
Here, that's correct.
And do they fit in the immediate, immediate, we must fix this plan or the, in the sometime future would be nice kind of list?
So what we did with these more distant from the central business district sections is we have done some asphalt repair, not replacement. And that was a request of the former council and so that's the direction that we took. And then these additional projects that will be done, again, that's the process that we go with our advisory board and rank those projects. I would share with you that the advisory board recognizes the importance of the replacement of older sections of the Animus River Trail. And I believe that they have strong priority to maybe take a look at that for this upcoming budget cycle. One of the things that we wanted to share with you is...
So Kathy, about the other four remaining ones, where are they on the project plan that currently exists?
They're all within the Capital Improvement Program and the list of projects that are included in the master plan.
So in what timing?
And the only one that's scheduled for now is number one, which is the section in Iris and Riverfront Park. The others were not ranked high enough by the board to fall in the five-year plan.
Even though they were ranked top of the line in the community surveys, okay?
Right. So, and so we thought it would be helpful for the council to know what sections of the Animus River Trail have we upgraded from the... the Animus River Trail have we upgraded from the asphalt to concrete.
Can you blow that map up?
So in 2008, we did the section by the library to make sure that there was a good spur and upgrading the section of the Animus River Trail there. In 2009, we did the section right behind Albertson's and 2013, we reconstructed the Junction Creek Bridge right by the high school because you know, that's a very heavily used section. In 2014, we did the County Road 210, that spur that comes down from Nature's Oasis over to the Harley, just behind the Harley Davidson Business, that's now concrete. And 2015, we upgraded the section in Animus City Park. 2017, upgraded the section in Memorial Park. And then 2017, we also did the reconstruction of the asphalt section of trail in Whitewater Park. And so one of the things that we have found is that, you know, we have to balance new trail construction and expansion of the trail with taking our older sections of trail and either redo them with asphalt, which is some work that we have done on these more outlying areas, or, or scheduling them for complete reconstruction. And so one of the things that is important for the council to know that most of the funding agencies that we get grant funds from are either CDOT or Great Outdoors Colorado. They're interested in expanding the trail network, not redeveloping existing sections of trail. And so when we apply for those grants, we have to be building new trail. And so what happens, like what's happening right now, we are building the Animus River Trail, new trail from Memorial Park all the way up to Oxmo Park, that's a mile. Well, that's kind of our current emphasis of Animus River Trail this year and that was funded by a grant that we couldn't have gotten by upgrading an older section of trail.
And I understand that, but I don't believe that expansion for the sake of expansion because you can get grant funding is necessarily the right way to make choices. And I would also suggest that the area of asphalt between the rec center and the Rotary Park is a horrible section that's heavily used, as I would also suggest that the section actually between the 160 Bridge and Santa Rita Park, particularly now that the construction's finished essentially, the sewer plant, is also a heavily used section. And the condition of those sections is, is not good. It's, it's not even bad, it's poor. And so I, I hesitate to agree that expansion is more important than maintaining and making things safe. So that's where I'm disagreeing with you, we just have to kind of agree to disagree about that. I think that maintaining what you've built over the years and taking the money that you've already put into it and, and preserving that money, I mean, you have to respect what you've already done and you have to bring it up to standard to make it useful before you continue expanding is really critical. That's my, my perception, so.
So the section of trail that is in Rank Park, which is behind the high school and the fairgrounds, is a poor section of trail and there is a spring in that area that feeds the fish hatchery. And so they have had it in their capital improvement program to replace that line and Scott has been working with the fish hatchery to make sure we coordinate because they're going to, you know, impact the trail when they do this work and they were wanting to do it last year and did not get to it and so they were trying to get to it this year. We have in the budget funding, again, it is an asphalt repair, it's not a rebuild to concrete, but it is in the budget to do asphalt repair there.
If you look at the asphalt repair that's down between Santa Rita Park and the 160 Bridge, it is a horrible experience. I'm sorry, there are sections that you tore out that are great, that are smooth and wonderful, but there's those gaps and those breaks and they get filled with tar and it just, they, all it does is sink. It's not, it's not a good solution.
Or a long-term solution.
And I'm just, so I don't, we've talked about this before and I just wanted you to know, I just want to make clear how I felt about it. I don't support the way this is being done, so.
Okay, well, so should we move on to some of the other comments and questions?
If you wish.
Yes, and so it sounds like that's all you would like to hear on the Animus River Trail and how it's identified in the master plan. Let's see if I can remember some of your other questions that you wanted to have response to.
They're all on the list.
So, let's see, and what were the other ones? Oh, the open space, I think, was one that you were wanting to take a look at. And so if we could go to the map on page 84 in the master plan, it identifies priority areas for preservation in the master plan and there's a description in the subsequent pages around that. And so I think that there is an identification of the areas that we would like to preserve for connectivity and gaps and then also in the statistically valid survey that was shown on, beginning on page 45. What it does in that survey is talk about unmet needs regarding open space and how the community views the importance of the type of open space they would like to see. And it's interesting that the highest area of an unmet need is, you know, that feel like that they need a better buffer, the community, this is from the master plan, need a better buffer from development. And, and in terms of the type of opportunities that people would like to see in their open space, which is on the next page on page 47, there's, the master plan speaks to, you know, what are the people using the, you know, the trails for and mainly it's for hiking and biking. And, and so in terms of the priority investment for open space, the community would like to see us invest in, you know, open space for hiking and, and, and running as well as community buffers and wildlife habitat. So I think that is addressed in the master plan.
Have, have areas that could be used for that been identified, like specifically?
Yes, in that map on page 84, the areas that are priority preservation areas. As you know, generally what we do with our open space program is we only work with willing landowners.
Oh, of course.
And so what we try to do is handle all discussions for acquisitions in executive session with the Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board and then once they forward a recommendation to the city council, it's handled in executive session with the council before we actually enter into a contract.
And what about, what appropriate reserve balances should be available for open space purchase?
So, you know, that was a question about sort of, is that an appropriate thing for a master plan? Really, our thought is that the annual budget process is really earmarked for the funding allocation for open space as well as stewardship. And so we'll be talking about that soon in terms of a set aside. Currently, what the city is doing with the annual budget process is we have a set aside of $500,000 a year for open space preservation and what happens with that is if there is an active negotiation going on when we're preparing the budget and we know that that number should be different or higher, then we certainly can come in with a higher number. But what we have found is by earmarking that $500,000 and, and then making sure that we have an opportunity that can be met with available funding and so then we can utilize that fund balance. And we've been very successful in acquiring open space and not letting go of any opportunities because of the lack of money by setting aside that $500,000.
Right.
And then we also have a set aside every year for stewardship. And again, anything that goes in, the good thing about a capital improvement program is that the money is set aside each year for both the acquisition and the stewardship. If it isn't expended in that year, it simply rolls in that same account to the next fiscal year.
So I have a question of Kathy. So that's stewardship, that's what you use for the fire mitigation or you're proposing using? And is that something like $25,000 a year? What is that?
We have, this year in the budget have appropriated $50,000. I believe in the stewardship account, we have about $250,000 that's available for stewardship projects.
That also includes signage and other things, right? It's not specific to the future needs of any fire mitigation plan?
Correct, it's all in the same account.
So that could conceivably be used from an open space acquisition? Not acquisition, but if you have a, a general $500,000 that you allocate every year for open space, you don't necessarily define it solely for acquisition?
The, there's two separate accounts. One is for open space acquisition, which is the $500,000 and then that, that fund balance is higher than that.
Yes.
Because of the acquisition schedule that we have and we haven't purchased a property this year and so that, you know, what we didn't spend last year rolls into this year and then will roll into next year. So that $500,000 is for that. And the same is true of stewardship money, you know, that is generally what's not used for acquisition, that's generally just used for the stewardship of open space.
Which is defined as fires, signs, and what else?
Generally, it's, it's fire, we've used it primarily for fire mitigation and we also use it for, you know, weed management if we're hiring a contractor to deal with weeds and then some signage. We have done signage in the past out of that fund.
So one of the things you missed was the measurement of the health of the community and how Parks and Rec has contributed to the health of the community since 2010 and also how it might be enhanced in the future and how it might be measured and how we might determine that. So I'm, to me, that's what, that's what the vision should be. It should be about the health of our community, whether it be physical or mental and how Parks and Rec contributes to that. And that's just, again, my point of view on it. I don't think that a vision of how to be the place where people want to be is, applies to what Parks and Recs is really trying to do.
So if you look at page two and three in the master plan, there's really three things you need to consider when you look at the big picture in terms of what are the, the mission, the vision and the core values of the Parks and Recreation Department. And if you look at the vision being the place people want to be, Parks and Recreation is the reason people want to be in Durango and the way we accomplish that with our mission is to enrich lives every day. And then if you also...
Well, so let me go back to the vision because I, I don't, so I don't agree that just being a place that people want to be is good for the community. And I think that if, that, that speaks to just anyone who wants to be in Durango. It's not speaking to our community. So I, I just, I don't, I don't agree with the vision and I don't agree with the philosophy of just to be the reason why people want to be here. I think that it has to be what's right for our community, what's good for our community and what creates our community. Enriching lives every day is fine, but I don't really know how we do that because let's do some definition of enrichment, but does that mean they're healthier? What does it mean? I just don't, I, I just don't, I'm not in alignment on this, is, that's all I can say, I'm just not in alignment on it.
When you look at the core values in terms of what that means in terms of specificity, you know, the service excellence, the high-quality offerings, innovation, health and wellness and sustainability. And so, you know, if you're breaking down all three of these mission, vision and core values, it really is, you know, comprehensive. One of the things that...
I don't know, I don't agree with that and I, and I think that having, I just don't agree with, I don't agree with it, so.
It was an interesting process, this master plan update in doing the mission, the mission, the vision and, and the core values. The consulting team came and spent a day with the Parks and Recreation Department full-time staff. And this is not how it was done in 2010.
Yeah, and that's where the vision came from, the consultants and the staff.
It did. And the first thing that we started with in this exercise was what's our current mission and our current vision? And no one could say what that was. And one of the things that the consultant, what's in the 2010 master plan, and the consultant said, you know, companies and private nonprofit as well as for-profit companies nowadays are shortening their vision and their mission statements to be much more succinct. And so really encouraged us to look at something that we can remember and that was meaningful to the staff.
To the staff and the consultants.
Which, which it felt that it could be a good description of what we provide to the community. So that's how we got to these and I would say that it resonates with those of, those of us in the Parks and Recreation Department that provide the service to the community. And this is a Parks and Recreation Department master plan and so...
I understand.
Yeah.
But that is also, that's a part of our, of our city though, too.
Absolutely.
It doesn't stand alone and doesn't operate all by itself.
Certainly.
Counsel, I need, as our liaison of the Parks and Rec Department, I have some comments as well.
Okay, well...
I, I did want to follow up to a few questions also of...
There was one more that I think we didn't cover that Kim had is was the, sort of the gaps in service with regard to Three Springs and underserved population.
And accessibility.
That was also a question with regard to...
On my list as well.
He was on your ear list as well.
Thank you.
And so, you know, at beginning on page 62, there was a series of maps that talked about equity maps. And so what that equity mapping is about is looking at recreation amenities that we see in, you know, are they neighborhood parks, are they pocket parks, are they playgrounds, are they ballfields? What are they that, that are needed in the community? And so this is providing a good overview of what's lacking in the community by area. And so you can see by geographic location in these series of maps where the certain types of amenities that we provide are lacking. And so in terms of Three Springs, people often think that we're not doing anything at Three Springs, but that's quite the contrary.
Well, isn't Three Springs down further south on this map?
It is.
And, and they're not even in this, they're not even, they have no peak?
On this particular map, yes, that's correct. And so if you look at neighborhood parks, that's another map that we have here, that there is Confluence Park that is there in Three Springs. And so that's an example of the, using the master plan to sort of drive the development that needs to be done. There will be other parks built in Three Springs by the developer, but this is the current park that has been developed in Three Springs.
But no investment by the Parks and Rec Department other than maintenance?
Other than maintenance. And that was by design when we entered into the development agreement between the city of Durango and Three Springs.
And how long ago was that?
Probably back in 2009? I mean, it was a long time ago that we entered into the development agreement between the city and Three Springs. I would look to Kevin to remember.
Early 2000s?
Okay. And so that development agreement basically laid the foundation that they had to build the hard surface trails and all the neighborhood parks in Three Springs. There are small pocket parks that are developed in Three Springs by the developer that we don't maintain, so it's not on our list of pocket parks.
So I would venture that the policy question for the city council is what responsibility do we have to growing, new and growing communities? Yes, we can hold the developers accountable for what they're doing, but do we certainly also have an obligation to take on creating new amenities for that constituent base of ours, particularly when it's a growing constituency base? And that's not something necessarily that you can answer, that may be a question of policy from, direction from the city council.
And then the other thing that the master plan spoke to in addition to the equity maps is on page 48, there's just a series of questions tying back to that statistically valid survey where it looks at what are the unmet needs in terms of facilities that are not being met by the community? So this is taking the community whole and what this is telling us is what's the greatest unmet need and what the community would like to see. And so Lake Recreation was the highest because this is before Late Night Horse opened and we think that was a timing issue somewhat.
Sure.
And, you know, the other thing that's an unmet need is outdoor amphitheaters, the community's interested in that, and community gardens. And so this really shows, an outdoor aquatic center is also shown as a high unmet need, which we think we can actually meet with our swim beach at Late Night Horse because that will be a nice new amenity for outdoor recreation. And then it also, in the next page, on page 49, it also talks a little bit about, you know, what are those type of amenities are most important to households that when we look at trying to meet those unmet needs, you know, what, what we can do in terms of the type of amenities? And that's what we, you know, used as a tool to help prioritize what we do for those underserved areas.
So could I, I also jump in because you mentioned the statistically valid survey and I remember the consultant sitting here around the table because I thought it was so fascinating that he asked... so fascinating, that he asked people, with every dollar, what would you spend? And 30% was maintaining and upgrading, you know, our existing facilities. And then I believe the 20% was soft trails or hard and soft trails, I think. So, and then I asked him, does the prioritization of this funding list reflect that statistically valid survey? And I understand the consultant had something like 40% influence over what took place here. But I will say that it troubles me that our prioritization list doesn't reflect the, how people would spend 50% of their dollars, recognizing that dollars are finite.
It actually does. So 60% of the recommendation of, if you take all of the priority projects that we have and we rank them, 60% was from the statistically valid survey. And that included the question about if you had a dollar, you know, how would you spend that?
But that's over $322 million of a list. But if you looked at what was on the, let's get done now and immediate, the prioritization, I would question that it really reflected those same dollar numbers.
You know, if you look at the priority investment, and I'm trying to remember the page on that, so on the master plan, which is the list of all the priority projects for investment of recreation facility. There's a couple of lists that we...
And 202 is one.
So this is one summary that, where we talk about priority investments of recreation facilities, and so from the survey. But then they did a prioritization of all of the Parks and Recreation amenities and, you know, from the priority investments for funding. And you're not finding, and I don't think I made a note of where that is.
So is...
And so, yeah, no, it's not in the survey. It's going to be a summary from the survey.
Can I ask a question on that, too? Because it's on maintenance, since we're on maintenance, before we change that. So, you know, to follow up further with Counselor Baxter's as well, her, you know, her question regarding prioritizing the maintenance as one of our top level. How, how are you addressing that question in this plan? Because we know, we heard that from the people, you know, in the statistically valid survey, you know, it was loud and clear that that was really number one. So how are we, how are we addressing that, knowing that Anamis River Trail is, is our prize project? How are we addressing maintenance in this plan?
So in the plan, there's a discussion about how do you rate the condition of our parks and our open space? And over 90% of our community ranks the condition of our existing parks and our open space and trails as good to excellent. So I would think that based on that finding, that the community is telling us that we do maintain our existing assets well, because that was a consistent theme that we got from the community from the 2010 master plan.
Actually, you could look at it another way, too. And you could say excellence is between 29 to 41%, and good, fair, and poor is between 59 and 71%. So, so it depends on how you look at it, and where do we want to be? Do we want to be...
That was my next question I had for you. You know, for streets, you probably know we do the payment condition index?
Right.
So do we have something like that for this? We are rating it, right? We are giving them a rating scale.
Right. And so in the master plan, there was a specific question on this. This is on page 44. And that's how we get the, if we add the two numbers together, it's over 90% in all categories where the rating, and so this is really community rating rather than a professional coming in and rating the condition of our open space. So this is actually what our community is telling us from the survey, how would you rate our open space condition?
And do we have a strategy around, as a staff, you know, in Parks and Recreation Department, what we want to hold ourselves to?
Yes. You know, I think that, you know, we are gold medal Parks and Recreation Department, and I think that we strive for continuous improvement and absolutely taking care of our existing assets. And that's why we allocate funding every year in the budget to make sure that our existing assets above all is well-maintained, and that we don't let anything become in disarray. So it's not well-maintained by the community.
That's not being done as well as it could be done on the Anamis River Trail, is what I would suggest to them.
Well, the community is telling us that they would rate the condition of our trail over 90% as good.
They're not talking specifically about the Anamis River Trail or certain sections of it. So we know that when you go out there and you experience it, that's what it's like. So I think that feet on the ground is, is a little more important in, like, assessing it than just what people say in general about trails.
Okay. Counselor Patine, you've been quiet over here.
I've just been waiting my turn patiently.
All right.
Thank you so much, everyone, for all the questions. And I've certainly never seen this process go through so much scrutiny, so thanks, everyone, for that. I think, you know, I think it's a great conversation. I think it's a great conversation. Thanks to Kathy and her team for all the work that you did on this. Obviously, this goes back a full two years with all the umpteen public processes that you went through. And I really felt that you just did a great job of fielding those questions, whether we choose to disagree or agree about some of the issues. I want to contextualize some of this for the viewing public, or anybody in the audience, in terms of how the process works, and how this plan is nestled into the other plans for the city, because I think it's important. The comprehensive plan is sort of the overall governing plan for the entire city, and there's a set of master plans that are nestled within that. Parks and Recreation Master Plan is one of those, gets re-updated on a fairly regular basis, but a decade's a long period of time. So it's a long, arduous process to get to this point. The methodologies used are common. You know, I think there's a lot of questions on the dais here about, you know, how did this consultant rank all of these things? How did this, this information come out in the visualization of it in the details and so forth? This is used throughout the entire country. This consultant works with, I think, hundreds of different communities, but there are many that do similar projects like this. And then that master plan gets distilled down into a strategic planning process, which is an every-five-year process, and then a process that actually gets updated every year by the Parks and Rec Department in conjunction with their Parks and Rec Board and their staff. And then, and the council also has an opportunity to weigh in on that. And then further gets refined down into the budgetary process. And I think, you know, one of the things that this council will get to do here next week, Monday and Tuesday, as we go through the budget process and the CIP, or Capital Improvement Plan process, is we'll get to weigh in and say, let's say that we all agree with Counselor Baxter over there, that we really ought to prioritize some of these immediate needs on the River Trail. We could certainly subvert all of this public process in that, in that meeting and say, hey, you know, Parks and Rec Board, your CIP ranking and everything that you're doing, and the Multimodal Board and your CIP ranking and everything you're doing, and the Parks and Open Space Organization and all the things that you're recommending, we disagree. We think we should do this project specifically on that. We could do that, and I think we're going to have some robust discussion around that. But what happens is it really is, the Parks and Rec Board, as it pertains to this particular plan, has gone through every year and looked at a plan like this, and a strategic plan, and their previous list that they had to adjudicate, and they've ranked these things, presented them to the council just like they did this year, and then we'll have the choice over which items we actually put in the budget and fund. And so just for the community's information, that's kind of how the process worked. I was certainly entertained corrections to that from you, Kathy. I think you're more knowledgeable about it than I'll ever be. But the plan itself, this master plan concept, if you look on, like, the Department of Local Affairs, and when they give directions up to communities on how do you develop these kind of plans, that we're broad is used a lot. And so this plan is broad. And one of the things I did before this meeting is I went and I reread this thing, because I thought, you know, there's been so many questions. I've sat through a bunch of sessions, study sessions, meetings with the Parks and Rec Board, meetings with you all on the Parks and Rec Board, and we have to ask a bunch of these questions. And I thought, am I missing something, you know, that I missed that this information was in here? And I've really found it to be the case that for the bulk of the questions that were asked, and I think they were very good questions, that really the information is there. And I would, I would challenge the community and recommend to you that you get online. This has its own website. It's got tons of detail on the process. This plan is long, but it's awesome. There's a lot of good pictures and graphs and charts. And it really reflects data, details that were collected by as many processes as you could probably imagine in the community over the last couple of years, with public input that was robust, with a strategically, or statistically valid survey, with a non-statistically valid survey, just for good effect. All these focus groups and everything else that was mentioned tonight. There's so much that goes into this, and then you also get the benefit of a professional consultant that works with so many of these communities throughout the country, that can also help us see into the future and say, you know, is it going to be important to have pickleball courts? We certainly hear that it's the fastest-growing sport in America, but are we going to, are we missing that? Because it doesn't make the ranking process. So should the Parks and Rec Board really contend with that next year in their CIP ranking process? And so that information's in here, too, and their best ability to, or tell the future of how these Parks and Recreation facilities are endeavored in. So, you know, in my view, and we may choose to disagree about all of this, this is a great document. It's comprehensive. It, it covers as much as I could possibly imagine it covering within the timeframe that was given to demonstrate it. And I think the questions that you all presented have been answered. You know, I, I don't know if it's worth wait. I took a bunch of notes while we were sitting here about it. Some of the details that I would bring up are like, sometimes we'll argue over, well, why is lake, the lake on top? And we'll say, well, that was the time of when the surveys went out. And that may be very well true. But then we're also contending right now with, one of the big things the community wants is a beach on that lake. That's a big recreational feature that we're contending with in the current CIP recommendation, correct? And, and so their minds are actually still on that facility. It's one of the most-used facilities in the community, so we can't forget that just because we opened a body of water, that we have also maybe an obligation in the community and expectation to provide some of the amenities that are expected with that body of water, like the beach, like camping, like some of the other revenue-generating facilities that will go on out there. So it's probably still top of mind. So when you look at those rankings, they, if you look at them in context, sometimes they do make sense. I think sometimes in these conversations, we compare this document to something that really belongs in the budget, or it really belongs in the strategic plan, or it really belongs in the review of the strategic plan on a yearly basis, and we're really talking about a master plan. And so, you know, I'm prepared to vote to approve this document. I think it's great. I think you guys did a great job. And I think you've done such a great job of answering the questions of the community. I'm happy to answer any questions. I've been in tons of these meetings. Did I get anything wrong? That's a question I have.
I think you did get the process right about what's the purpose of this plan versus the annual budgeting process and the strategic plan, where we get into the prioritization. And really, this isn't meant to prioritize us, just to make sure we understand what the community is telling us their priorities are. And, and so, because we do use this document as a tool. It's not the only decision-making tool that the board uses, but our staff, but it certainly is a great tool and has been very effective for us to have a document like this with overarching a plan of how we want to see ourselves going forward.
That reminds me of a point I'd like to make about it, because I think one of the big questions that has come up in the community about the plan is $332 million. That's a big number. And then you start to look into the details, and one of those details is $112 million for Durango Mesa, or 105, is that right?
105, yeah.
Sorry. Not by seven. Forgive me. And you think, well, should that be in there? Do we have the money to do that? What's reasonable? And I think one of the things that's come up in this conversation is, should there be an appendix to this document that's created that really looks at the current revenue flows and predictions relative to that, and says, you know, what is reasonable in this big list without some other unimaginable funding that we could achieve? I think that's a good exercise. I think some of those things have come up in that conversation. I'd love to see that be incorporated into this plan as sort of a ancillary appendix to it. But I'd like to make the point that if you don't put that project in the plan, the $105 million isn't in there. As a visionary document, the community doesn't have the ability to think, how can we get this world-class facility done? And if we don't have the ability to contemplate that, I would suggest to you that it never does get achieved. And so it's got to be in there. It doesn't mean that it takes a priority over the best concrete on the spine of our community, for sure, but it might mean that we're really challenging the Parks and Rec community, board, staff, council, everybody that's involved, and saying, hey, how can we get this done? Does this matter for us to move forward with? If it's not in there, we're missing $105 million, and this plan looks a lot smaller, but, and it, you know, may be more realistic financially, but it doesn't accomplish those vision goals that I think are so critical to where are we going, you know, and where do we want to go? If that's not in there, we don't have great guidance.
Chris, I agree with you that there are aspirational things in here. And, but I think that we also need to be realistic as well as aspirational. And so let's be realistic and let's be aspirational. We're not doing that. We're just being complete, everything all put together in one big pot. And I, I think that's not appropriate for true planning and true use of dollars and what we'll end up also having to maintain after we do this.
I would argue that's what the strategic plan does, and that's what the budget does. And so this document is not intended to do that, but that's a different...
And I would add that Parks and Rec, Kathy, I believe this is the number you gave me, in the past 20 years has spent about $100 million. This is a 10-year plan, and even if you go from 332, removing the 105, you're still in excess of $200 million in projects on the list, over half the time period that we spent $100 million. So I mean, I look at it, I'm still coming back to, I get the point of that, and I put it in my comment, the, the other items that would be great or could be incredible, but what are our priorities for the next 10 years with what we anticipate having to work with? And, and for me, Kathy, that's when I, my definition of a plan, and I listed the 10 items, I didn't cover everything for the record here, because I knew that Counselor Baxter, I saw that she had some items on her question list that overlapped with mine. But for me, the, you know, I want to see, and it's my definition of what a plan should do, is I want to see the prioritization and the implementation of it, and the emphasis on addressing the maintenance that we have, and a realistic timeframe for what can guide us for the next 10 years. And I, I don't see it in this document as it stands right now. I appreciate so much the work that's gone into it, and I think part of that stems from what do we want to achieve through this process? And maybe we have different definitions of, of what that outcome could or should be. So I wanted to share that thinking.
Well, one of the things that we provided to the city council was a 20-year financial analysis using the existing funding sources from the dedicated tax, as well as the general fund that currently supports Parks and Recreation. And it wasn't meant to be a prioritization of projects, because that would quite honestly offended the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Natural Land Preservation Advisory Board, that staff created a document that sort of negated their, their prioritization process. And so, but it gave us an idea of realistically what we can accomplish in the next 10 years or five years. Certainly, the budget captures a five-year horizon, and so you'll see what is in the five-year plan in the 2020 budget, what's being proposed in the next five years. But that is subject to an annual review process and looking to make sure that the boards have an opportunity to advance those recommendations to the council. And so, you know, if you remember, we had more of a prioritization in this plan, and that was not acceptable to the advisory boards or the city council. So we, we sort of backed that out and talked about how our process works. And so it wasn't meant to be leaving the community wondering. It's more about telling the community, you know, these are the list of projects. It is a matter of prioritization. And we look at that every year, and we want your input, because things do change, and we want to make sure we make decisions that are, you know, consistent with community support and desires.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you, did you ask all the questions you...
I have asked all the questions. I've had, yes, thank you very much. I think at this time, I'm wondering if we might have a motion from council. We've had a lot of questions, a lot of talk around this. I want to thank you as well, Kathy, for all of your efforts. I'm sorry that Counselor Brookie is not here today, because these have been some good discussions that we've had.
He's participated in a lot of the facilities and creating them and all of that.
And I do appreciate some of the changes that you have made to address some of the concerns that we had, especially the removal of the prioritization of the list. I think that was a very good move, given that this is an overarching vision, plan. I think that, that was very helpful for me, that you did that. And so, and also taking on the word, the word about... the long-term dedicated funding source, I think we've changed that now to, should. So it's better than will. So I do appreciate you being willing to make those changes with the community and to work with the community and to engage so many individuals throughout this entire process. I appreciate the effort that's gone into it. And I also appreciate council's scrutiny of it and discussion around it. I appreciate it very much. And I think, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2019 Parks Open Space Trails and Recreation Master Plan.
Do we have a second?
May I make a point? I would like the community to recognize that if this is seconded and we go forward and the vote fails, then there is no recourse other than a reconsideration of the vote. So if there's any reason to continue this discussion for anything to be changed or added, this might be the time to discuss that. Because once the vote is taken to not adopt it, then it would require a reconsideration process that is complicated.
There's two.
I mean, we could pass it, we could pass or fail tonight, and happy with that. I just want to point that out.
If I was going to make any changes, I would have two. If we were going to make any changes.
Well, so there's a motion on the floor. Do we have to pull that motion off before we continue this?
There is another second, yeah.
Okay.
No. I mean, I'm happy to second it, but you realize the consequences of making a vote.
We can have discussion, just changes, amendment to the motion.
I'm happy to second it, so we can move forward with a decision.
Okay, further discussion from council.
I would just ask if there are changes that you're asking for, and discuss that. Now, I think that to, Councilor Nowsworthy's point, we have to, we have to have some direction one way or the other. This is a long, expensive process, so we've got a lot of other good stuff to work on as council. Love to get some clarity on what we're asking them to do. We're really asking them to change something.
I will jump in and say, as this is, I appreciate the work, I appreciate the addition. As this is written right now, I don't see it, it's not some, it's not a plan I'm prepared to live with. And I'm not certain that there's much to be gained by continuing this discussion right now. It's a guidance document, you've prepared it, but by the city adopting it, it gives a much more stamp of approval to it. And I know that we have other priorities to work on, and so I'm not certain that continuing to get this to a point where you can reach full support is worth the effort or necessary.
I would just point out that you're, you know, in doing that, if that's the outcome, we would be bypassing the work of not only the staff, but the consultants who was paid healthily for this, as well as the Parks and Rec Board, as well as the Planning Commission, as well as all of the other advisory boards that are relevant to this open space and multimodal and everybody who's weighed in here. So it's a lot of community work, it's a lot of effort that's gone into this. And there's, you know, if we really try and validate our votes based on community input, certainly that's in here, and we would be going against the grain of everything that's been stated here.
So I agree with you, Chris. I think there's a lot of data in the report and a lot of statistical information. I'm not sure the report put it to good use, and that's one of my major concerns.
I would suggest that I too appreciate the efforts, community-wide efforts that have gone into this and staff. And I do appreciate that it is a guiding visionary document. And I have, having participated on the Parks and Rec Board myself, also understand the processes that we go through annually and through the strategic plan and the prioritization process, which I appreciate. It's very, very community-driven. I appreciate those processes. I also do agree that we have a lot of really important work ahead, and so does council staff. And so I do think we have to get to a point where regardless, we're moving forward, and we need to have, I think, a vote and see where we go from there. So with that, Ms. Phillips, come in. We have a roll call, please.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
No.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
No.
Mayor Hesse?
Yes.
So Mr. Nelson, in this case, just to make sure, it fails. So can, is it possible to have a motion to continue the discussion for a further time, especially if we, I mean, the one, of course, we're missing a counselor tonight, who obviously in this case would help our vote one way or the other.
I think that's the point.
That's the point I just made.
And so, when will we?
If you want to direct staff to change it and bring it back, I think then you could vote on it, but that's not what I heard, so.
Well, when will we have the discussion further then, or do we advise that now?
So one of my feelings about this is that we have a huge budget process ahead of us, and in a lot of ways, I feel like I would like to go through that budget process before we approve any significant master plan of any, from any department. Because I think that going through that budget process will hugely inform us as to what a master plan should and could look like. And that's one of my objections.
And I would add that during the discussion phase, that's why I kind of cautioned us, do we really want to go here, is that we just voted this down, and the vote to reconsider would need to be presented by either Kim or me under the prevailing decision. That should either take place immediately now, or it would need to take place, I look to the attorney fairly soon. I don't know the, I don't know the issues around giving us completely revised document. We've turned down what exists now. So there could be, if I understand the rules correctly, there could be a new document, but I'm not in a rush to see that.
And I, so, something else that it feels to me like it's being presented as it's imperative that we, that we approve a document now. And I don't agree with that. I think time and consideration is very helpful. I appreciate the process that we've gone through, all the time that's been spent on it. It is hugely impactful, and I'm not sure, even having read it twice and considered it, that I fully understand the implications of it, which is why I would like to go through a budget process before I come back and look at this again.
I think that's up to council.
It sounds like what we will be doing. Well, yeah, it sounds like what we will be doing. So I think with that, we just, we have to move on. And I just want to thank you, Ms. Metz, for the time. And it sounds like we will be having further discussion at a later date about the process or about the plan itself. No, no changes are being recommended right now. I think that it sounds like we want to go through a budget process and have further discussion after that time. That's what I'm hearing from council.
And I also, we'd like to reiterate that I think Councilor Bateen's comment about what he considered an addendum is a good launching pad for what might look in some future version of this document at a not immediate date.
Okay. Moving on to that one. Moving on to council reports and actions. Counselors, anyone?
I would like to report that I took a ride along with a corporal in our wonderful police force, and it was a three-hour trip. Incredible. I learned a lot, saw our police officer in action. He was respectful, professional, just incredibly courteous in every situation. And some of them were quite difficult. And I found myself thinking, this is how I would want my family, my loved ones, anyone I cared about, I would want them to receive this kind of care. So chief, I want to acknowledge the opportunity, that first of all, the team and the opportunity, and I want to encourage those in the community that this is, there's a process for applying for this, but it was a wonderfully informative and rewarding experience. Thank you.
Other counselors?
I'm going to pass, no board meetings last week, so.
Okay. So I went to our first liaison meeting at the Fort Lewis Senate, so the ASFLC, Associated Student Body of Fort Lewis College, and they invited me to dinner beforehand, which was really fun. And their cafeteria is awesome. They have a great salad bar, by the way. So then we, then I went to their senate meeting, and what was interesting to me was, I talked a little bit about what we were doing as far as the city manager hire process, because that's kind of where it was, and they were very interested in that. And then there were some presentations, they asked a whole bunch of questions, but there were some presentations. And this one gentleman presented the concept of having esports teams and e-gaming and the draw for students that that could be, because nationally this was becoming a big deal. People were actually looking at schools to go e-gaming. And I, the language, you know, the vocabulary, I had no idea about what half this person was saying, you know? And I'm like, this is crazy. But what really struck me was that as, you know, I mean, obviously, I'm a little older than the students there, but things don't change. What was important to those kids was that they were creating relationships between each other. And they were, there were two different kinds of gaming groups, one's tabletop, like Dungeons and Dragons, one's e-games. And they were trying to figure out how to work together, how to make it good for the students, how to draw people to Fort Lewis College, about how to be recognized, about how to have fun, all the things that we always want to do. And it sounds like they're talking in language we don't understand, but if you distill it down to what they're really talking about, it's about what we all want in our community. And so it's great to see these college kids doing that. And they asked about how we can collaborate together, the city and the college, what we might do. One of the things I talked about was the idea of having education classes at Fort Lewis that support the business community that we would like to have here. So what kind of degrees could support our business, and what kind of businesses do we need to attract that can support their degrees? So that when they get out of Fort Lewis College, how do they have jobs? And it was just really great. So I highly encourage, I mean, I'd be happy to go again. I would think maybe three times a year might be great, but I highly encourage three or four, one of you to go, because it was really fun. I just, I loved it, so.
Excellent.
And I think that's the only report I have.
Okay, I wanted to remind the community that the Durango Fall Cleanup starts October 7th through November 1st. It's yard waste only. And for more information, go to durangogov.org, durangogov.org/c cleanup. And I also wanted to let everyone know, we were reminded from previous, Councilor and Mayor Dick White, that we have recently renewed our membership in ICLEI, which is International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. And it's an international organization of local governments and government organizations that are committed to sustainability issues. And with this renewal, we're making progress not only towards our sustainability goals, but reiterating that we recognize that any sustainability goals has to be a community-wide, global-wide initiative. And that is, this organization is such. So we're happy to be renewing our membership in that. And then my Creative Economy Commission, as liaison to that, I wanted to let you guys know that we just approved and had our last two applications for our Durango Creates grants. This is, these are really, these are $5,000 grants, but they're great improvements to our community. The first one is a pocket park between the new Zia and Birds. It's going to be 15 feet long all along the building of Zia. And so it's going to be some greenery amongst all of the concrete there, which is really great. And they're very excited about that. And then, then the commission really was trying to encourage public access, accessibility and walkability into the park. So the great discussions around that. And then the other project is a handcrafted house mural project. It's a partnership with Local First, lead artist Jen Rauling. And it's a mural on the building that looks at both the Smiley Building and Buckley Park at the top of the hill. And so it's going to be just really, another really nice mural for our community, which we're excited about. And they're going to start that right away. And then I did also want to remind the public, you've heard about it a lot, that October 7th and 8th next week, we'll have two full-day budget retreats, and they're going to be recorded and live streamed. So hope people will tune into that. And so with that, let's move on to future potential agenda items.
So I would like to have us discuss just making this public comment at the beginning of the meeting, a permanent change. So I don't know if that's something we just discuss, we vote on, or whatever.
I would like to do the same. I think that it's really in the benefit of the, it encourages public participation. In both cases where we've made that change, public has departed after they spoke. I think it's a nice, it would be a nice change if there was council support for that.
I think it's fine. I also do also, though, like, because people don't know about it, there's one later too, which I think has been good that you kept that included rather than just.
Just in case people come.
Because people do come late to meetings, and they might.
Come after work, come after getting home, taking care of kids.
I would be happy to, I mean, if we were to make that change and there was council support for it, you know, for the first bit of time, we could keep it on the agenda for twice, see how it goes. We could always remove the second one later if we realize that no one is using that. But initially, to just allow everybody the opportunity who comes to speak, we could perhaps consider then putting it as agenda item number four, before presentations and proclamations, and also keep it as, you know, where it currently is. I believe it's number eight.
For a transition and then see if we want to keep.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Can someone sign up on both?
No.
Okay.
Interesting. Good question.
Thank you. We can put that on the.
Very good.
Thoughtful question.
Thank you.
Anything else for future potential agenda items?
Definitive answer there.
Actually, I have a couple. One of them is, we had a very short study session the other day about advisory board roles and responsibilities.
Yes.
And I was wondering if we might want to take the same approach we did with the Strategy and Finance Committee and put a working group together of three city councilors to come up with a proposal for city council, rather than trying to get it on another study session and do it that way. I don't know. I thought it was fairly successful with their Strategy and Finance Committee. I don't know how council feels about that, but I would.
Yeah, it seemed like it worked to me. And I think the only thing that I would like to contribute to the idea is that it's really focused on taking the existing document and improving it as opposed to regenerating a new thing. But I think, you know, there's plenty of room for improvement, so that would be my recommendation for it.
So how do you want to go about?
There's a few items that I think are, that I think are, that I would like to participate in the discussion on, and that would be around term limits and shares primarily.
Do you want to be part of the working group?
But I, I don't know if I need more meetings, honestly. I was kind of looking forward to having this discussion as a council.
Well, you would, you would still be able to have that discussion? It would just be that, just like with the Strategy and Finance, the basic framework, actually, we could make it more robust than that. The basic framework could be brought to a study session again, so we could have that conversation. But we wouldn't just be starting from nothing. Because we would be starting from an idea that then we just would shift and adjust.
I think that, I mean, that did work. But I think one of the things, if you have three people doing that, then you bring that to the meeting, then.
Well, we could do two. I mean, I'm not.
Yeah, two would be good in that case, just because that, you know, if you're going to do the brainstorming, it's not a pretty poor-burn conclusion.
Yeah.
Once you walk in.
And I'm happy to work on it, and I'm happy to.
And I obviously always love this.
Happy to not, I mean, if somebody else has got a pressing desire.
Okay. I mean, if Dean wants to, you know, we can incorporate that too. But, and Chris, if you want to.
I was just thinking, maybe we could figure out who that is at the next study session, or that's where we might all be there.
We could do that during the budget retreat, that's when you're all there.
Yeah, just do a quick.
Yes. And if I might, on that, I spoke with the mayor earlier this week about this topic. And based on what I had heard at the study session, have reached out and started working with staff to come up with a strategy so that we could provide you information and a proposal on how to move forward with specific boards that have members rotating off. It sounded like you were interested in looking at the makeup of each advisory board. So if there was, all the boards have rotating members, and different numbers of those members are rotating off. And that way, we can arrange those items for you so that you're working on the resolutions or formulating documents for each of those boards in a process that will be the most efficient to get you where I hear you would like to go.
Right. So for like skills and experience and whatever, so that when that person Right, so for like skills and experience and whatever, so that when that person, when that board comes up with a gap, we've already taken care of it, we don't, right.
So if it was the, pick a board, Community Relations Commission, if they had three members coming off, we would put that at the top versus if, multimodal's not a good one, but a different board had one member coming off, and so you would go through, and so Chris Bakary is the staff person that we're using for that, she is over boards and commissions in terms of administrative items for us.
Okay, that's awesome. So then I heard that Barbara and I should kind of steam forward on that?
No, I heard we wait until...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Study session, that's right.
We're going to wait.
Besides you.
Budget, okay, well, we won't have time before the budget anyway. So one of the other things that I had suggested was that we add to our agenda a city manager report, so that the community gets to hear our city manager talk about what's going on with staff, with the city, and all of that, and it creates a relationship and helps to create trust. So I think Amber's acceptable to that idea, and so, you know, it's five minutes?
To council.
10 minutes?
Use the existing format, kind of, and present that, is that the idea?
So where would it, I don't know where it would go on the agenda.
It could go under Administrative 12, just before the council reports and actions.
And then you could just hand me the three-minute timer.
Perfect, yes, please.
So would this be a time to talk about things at the mayor's meeting, or something like that, or?
It can be, if we want to.
Well, it could be whatever you think that the community and city council kind of needs to put in their thought processes.
We can give updates, I'll come up with a proposal of example items, and for the first few times, we can run through and make sure that it's hitting the mark for what you're looking for, and...
And for what you're looking for.
And what I'm looking for, what I would like to do in terms of, if we have staffs that receives awards, I'd like to make sure that we recognize the staff for awards, we are recognizing staff when they are on statewide or national committees, project updates for key items that are going on in the community, grant awards, and then items of note that will be interesting to our community. One of the other items that I would like to do in that report, which would not necessarily fall under administrative, is to have an opportunity to introduce some of our key staff members to help the council and the community as well.
Absolutely, that'd be great. So, and as a good segue, I just want to say, thank you for joining us here, and thank you for being our interim city manager, and we're looking forward to working with you.
I'm honored, thank you.
And I had one future potential agenda item, that was following up on our discussions with Jen Lopez with the Athena Group, and we had, we had an email follow-up, and she talked in that email about forming a working committee to start working with various members of the community, someone from the county, various...
Key stakeholders.
Key stakeholders, thank you. And she is trying to get this in place as soon as possible, I believe she's looking, staff will participate on this working committee, and then we're looking for one, one city councillor to potentially work with on this committee, so wanted to talk with council about that. And I know we have a couple interested people, you guys tend to seem to have a lot of time, so, I'm not sure.
I cleared my calendar for four years, okay? Just so I could do this.
You guys both, I don't know who, you know, how involved you guys...
I think if you can, wanted to discuss it next week as well, and what the merit is, or if there's, if there's a possibility to be a substitute for, you know, one person can be a substitute in case you can't make something.
Yeah, or maybe you take turns, Kelly, yeah, I'm very open to however you guys want to do it.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be an arm wrestle.
But she did, it was kind of a request to try to get this in place as soon as possible.
Well, when does she want to start?
She would, she, her message was, in place ASAP.
Well, so here's an idea, say Jen, you will have a city councillor, and you just tell us when, and one of us will show up.
Not actually works if it's between Kim and me, because if it's a day that you can't work, you know, you've got somebody, you've always got somebody there.
And in order to get myself out of the loop, I will refer her to the two of you coordinating.
Yes, for all future communication.
Assuming that I...
I'm just assuming, I'm sorry.
Well, you haven't said anything, do you want to?
No, I don't, no, 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 I think it was a good suggestion, I just wanted to make sure that you wrote that down.
Okay, so Jen can contact, okay, thank you.
I'm like the sick dog, so I'm not going anywhere.
I'll tell her that she can contact one of you two then, all right, and any other future potential agenda items, anybody, okay. All right, with that, I adjourn the meeting, our next meeting is October 15th, and I want to thank our PIO professionals, Victor Locke and Mitchell Carter, thank you guys.
Okay, you can turn it off now. Turn it off, please.
Well, he's not next to you, he's 14 and a half, so he's just...